All right, I'm live.
Jenny, I'm very sad to have read your email just a second ago.
Oh, thank you, Dave. We're excited. We sold our house for, we've been underwater for a decade, so it was really nice to sell it in this wonderful market. But buying, not so easy.
Building is not either. You'll find out if that's your plan.
Yeah, I think that's what we're gonna do, Chris. We're gonna build. I know.
Yeah, the costs are up like three times normal and the labor is backed up. Everybody used their stimulus money to buy additions onto their homes and renovations.
It's because their parents just made them move in.
In the policy meeting, I did offer Jenny that we do have a unfinished barn with some room. But, yeah.
You know, we did find temporary housing at an exorbitant price today, John. My husband's filling out the application. That's ridiculous what we're paying for this apartment. We will have a.
It has crossed my mind, the thought that I just need a piece of property somewhere with maybe some running order and a big pole barn, somewhere where I could pull my RV into and keep some of my stuff off of my next adventure.
Nice.
But your barn would be lovely, John.
Solid. Used to have water.
Water? Doesn't have water?
We shut it off because we didn't need it, but it can be stored for a fee.
Does it have electricity?
Yeah, it's got, that's good. Kick-ass electricity.
Air conditioning?
To have one, the back room was an office for the previous owners. Yep. Used to have heat, but we turned that off too. So.
Are you ready to get going?
We are.
Okay. All right, everyone. Thank you for joining our virtual meeting. We're going to, I'm going to call the meeting to order. And our first item on the agenda is our flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, next is our roll call.
Okay, Mr. Reimers.
Here.
Mr. Spear.
Here.
Mr. Akmanowicz.
I am present.
Ms. Weed.
Here.
Mr. Kern.
Walking.
Mrs. Mitchell.
I'm here.
Mr. McCucci.
Here.
Mr. Jackson.
Here.
And Mr. Klein, I don't believe is here.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. And just a reminder, this meeting is being recorded and can be viewed at a later time. Next item is the minutes, so I will need a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting.
To move.
I'll second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Okay, the motion carries unanimously. Okay, I am going to try something here. I am not 100% sure it's gonna work, so if it doesn't, guys, I really give my best effort. I wanted to share a song that really was, some of you may have heard it, I may have even sent it to some of you because it was just very touching to me. And it just reminds me of persevering through this time where I feel like there's a lot of COVID fatigue. And we are, you know, continuing to ask a lot of our staff. And so give me just one second, guys. I'm gonna see if I can, I'm gonna try to share my screen. Okay, just a second here. Of course, now I can't play it. Why do these things happen to me? You guys hear it?
Yes.
Yes.
You're the engine that makes all things go. And you're always in disguise, my hero. I see your light in the dark, smile on my face when we all know it's hard. There's no way to ever pay you back. Bless your heart, know I love you for that. Honest and selfless. I don't know if this helps it, but. Good job. You're doing a good job, a good job. You're doing a good job. Don't get too down. The world needs you now. Know that you matter, matter, matter. Yeah. You're doing a good job, a good job. You're doing a good job. Don't get too down. The world needs you now. Know that you matter, matter, matter. Six in the morning. As soon as you walk through that door, everyone needs you again. The world's out of order. It's not a sound when you're not around. All day on your feet. Hard to keep that energy, I know. When it feels like the end of the road, you don't let go. You just press forward. You're the engine that makes all things go, go. Always in disguise, my hero. I see your light in the dark. Smile on my face when we all know it's hard. There's no way to ever pay you back. Bless your heart, know I love you for that. Honest and selfless. I don't know if this helps it, but. Good job. You're doing a good job, a good job. Good job. You're doing a good job. Don't get too down. The world needs you now. Know that you matter, matter, matter. Good job. You're doing a good job, a good job. You're doing a good job. Don't get too down. The world needs you now. Know that you matter, matter, matter. Mothers and fathers, the teachers that reach us, strangers who friends that show up in the air. From the bottom to the top, the listeners that hear us, this is for you. You make me feel. You're doing a good job, a good job. You're doing a good job. Don't get too down. The world needs you now. Know that you matter, matter, matter. Thank you so much to our first responders, our healthcare workers, our mothers.
Thank you to our moms and our dads.
Thank you to our teachers who've helped us.
We know it's been hard, but thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good job.
So I don't know about you guys, but I just feel like that's so powerful.
Yeah, it was nice. Thanks for sharing.
Yeah, I've heard that a bunch of times and, you know, it just talks about how everyone, at this point, you know, that we're going in so many directions and we're really giving, we feel like we're on empty and we feel like, yeah, we feel like we're at the end of the road in this, but we just, we still keep pushing and. So as, as much as I've said it, I know that this board does appreciate all of the hard work that our teachers, our staff, our administration, our maintenance crew, our nurses. I just wanted to start the, the meeting off with some gratitude and that we recognize all the hard work that you guys put in. So, thank you.
You're here. That was very nice.
Thank you. All right. All right. With that, we're gonna move on to our first public comment.
The first one is from Melissa Cotter of Quakertown Borough. Do we have any idea if the kids will return to full day school anytime soon? Next comment is from Maureen Vanderflyte. And she does not live within the boundaries of the Quakertown Community School District, but she has a student in the high school. Education has declined severely over the past year. Will you be offering in-person summer learning at all grade levels to help them catch up? If not, you should help these kids. Online learning, online learning is not for everyone. Learning needs to be inclusive for all. Next comment is from Kimberly Gold from Haycock Township. As a district nurse, I will not present any data or case numbers. Tonight, I want to thank my professional nursing colleagues that I work with day in and day out, seven days a week and after hours. This year has been hard and I am so glad to walk beside you and face this public health crisis with you by my side. We have taken a beating and we can still find humor and support each other. You all are extraordinary women, top professionals, and always, always have the best interest of our students, staff, and community. We could all not, we all could not do this without the wonderful support we have also received from administration, the countless hours of planning and developing a health and safety plan that works. I am sure your exhaustion matches ours. Your support is immeasurable and well-valued. Lastly, I wish to thank my school night egg, to all of the staff for the support and encouragement that makes coming to work each day well worth it. We are truly a work family and I love and appreciate everyone. The next one is from Cindy, oops, Cindy Brown from Richland Township. Thank you for taking the time to read my comment. Our school district is one of the few districts that opens school live with the option for students to attend five days a week since September. This parent and many others appreciate the efforts set forth by our school board's staff and administrators in making this happen. We serve our students well by seeing that they were offered a live option. My senior has been live since September and we thank you. Please continue putting our students first by recognizing our seniors with their only fun, memorable event for their senior year. Let's provide them with a senior prom. We were able to open live and in-person seven months ago when our other schools did not. We should be able to give our seniors a prom. Those same schools that did not open when we did in September are now giving their seniors a prom. We should do the same. Let's figure out a way to give these kids this one memory that will last a lifetime. They deserve it. Next comment is from Patricia Moreno of Richland Township. What are the plans for senior prom? There has been little or no transparency to seniors regarding their prom. There are extra funds available from last year as well as from this year. Many area high schools have proms planned already. While this issue may seem small in comparison, comparison to quarantining, busing, and redistricting, it remains a very important issue for our seniors. Please plan a fun, safe prom for our seniors. They deserve it. Thank you. Next comment is from Nancy Camp of Haycock Township. I just want to thank the board for approving Levy. We are so happy to keep this good company and they're caring drivers. The next comment is from Dawn Crutes of Richland Township. Many other school districts have made plans for having a prom. At this time, educators, elderly, and immunocompromised people have had the opportunity to receive the COVID vaccine. Please work with the committee to approve plans for a prom and other proposals such as senior picnic, et cetera. It would be wonderful if our seniors can gain at least some of their senior year and celebrate their accomplishments together as a senior class. Next comment is from Kathleen Burke, who is a staff member. Please take the advice and guidance of QCSD nurses when they express their concerns with modified quarantine. They are medical professionals, professionals who are in our school buildings daily and know what is actually happening with our students and staff. By constantly looking to only Dr. Damsker's opinions, which often fly in the face of epidemiologists and other scientists, it appears as though you are practicing confirmation bias as you are only considering the opinion of those who agree with your personal beliefs. Next comment is from Kathy Infante of Milford Township. Tonight, as you move forward to amend our health and safety plan, I ask you to listen to our nurses. The presentation by Ms. Kelly at the last meeting gave a comprehensive picture, a trend of increasing COVID positive students in our schools. This is not a surprise when the cases in our county, state, and country are also rising. Dr. Rochelle Walansky, Director of the CDC, recently, recently gave a dire warning. She spoke of a sense of impending doom as COVID infections and hospitalizations tick up and pleaded with Americans, quote, "to not let up on mitigation measures," end quote. Dr. Damsker recently stated in, in an article on levittownnow.com, a local news site, quote, "While cases are indeed up, indeed up some, there is a trade-off between these increases and finally allowing people to go back to some of their normal activities," end quote. It is possible, the 96-personed hot, is it possible, the 96 persons hospitalized in Bucks County last week, 11 of which on ventilators, felt this rush to normalcy, a fair trade-off? We have 10-plus weeks of school left. What is the rush? And the next comment is from Brian, sorry, Ryan, Ween, the QCEA president. Good evening, school board. Although you have already voted on implementing modified quarantine, you also left the door open to reconsider and stick with the current plan, which I hope you'll do. Continuously throughout this year, some board members have ignored the recommendation and pleas from teachers, support staff members, nurses, and administrators. Just recently, as the last board meeting, although board members stated they would listen to the nurses, they really didn't, leaving nurses feeling defeated, ignored, and unappreciated. Despite the administration specifically stating that they also don't support a modified quarantine plan, you snub them as well. Instead of listening to the people who are left implementing the decisions you make and who take on the most risk in our schools, you continue to only seem to take direction from Dr. Damsker, who now seems to be the 10th member of your board. As you have touted many times, our health and safety plan has been working. So with a few months left in school, why take the risk and much, and make much such a major change? The data has been changing continuously and as of right now, virus variances are on the rise. Additionally, more recently, data has shown an uptick in children contracting the virus across the globe, as well as within our district, which our nurses have shared with you too. Children are now also being seen as drivers in recent community spread. These trends should worry you and make you pause your modified quarantine decision, especially as of the April 5th, Bucks County still has a substantial community transmission rating. By agreeing to implement modified quarantine, you will be allowing commonly asymptomatic children to freely come and go to school even after being exposed to COVID, putting the community, students, staff members, and staff members' families at risk by potentially increasing the community spread of the virus. Some have even questioned, questioned the validity of the Bucks County Department of Health data, not only with COVID death totals, but case totals and contact tracing as well. You continue to arrogantly brag that the, that there hasn't been spread in schools. However, I don't see how that can be accurately stated since our asymptomatic students aren't tested on a regular basis. We've seen spread in the daycares and their transportations that feed into our schools. However, because they don't have QCSD in front of their names, the virus magically doesn't cross the doors of our building and spread elsewhere. Were those case, were those cases reported by the county as school spread? When a neighboring Bucks County district's girls soccer team and some of their family members tested positive, was it reported as school spread by the county or reported at all? You've made it very difficult to trust local data and trust that our students, staff, and community will be safe when they put so much of your trust in one local professional's opinion and not the more commonly followed state and federal guidance. For the sake of all involved, please reconsider your decision to implement, implement modified quarantine. And that is the end of public comments.
Keith, you look like you're itching to say something.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to see if the administration did have an answer or anything about the junior or senior prom and summer school.
Hold on one second. I was gonna ask the same thing, but I do want to address just a couple of the comments. You know, I would, I would not want to be in a position to, to make, to be a person who would communicate public health guidance because I feel like their, their job is so hard. They're trying to find this balance between making people do the right thing and, you know, maybe a little bit of fear. But, but the, I really had a big issue with the, the CDC director, this whole idea of impending doom. Impending doom. We have so many reasons to be happy, to have joy, and to look forward to a positive future. We are administering vaccines. These are incredible vaccines. These are breakthrough technologies. We have 75% of 65 and older seniors who have been vaccinated. We have a, most of our immunocompromised folks, well, a good portion of them, I can't say how many, but, and we continue to see that all Americans who want a vaccine should be able to soon be able to acquire one. And these vaccines are extremely effective. One thing I worry about is what is this world gonna do when we go back to normal and people begin to get sick again? Because we haven't really seen that in the last year. Knock on wood, we haven't seen a lot of flus or colds or, you know, the, the traditional sicknesses and things like that. But we have to keep our eye on what is most important here and that is, are we reducing the deaths? Are we reducing severe, severe illness and hospitalizations? And what we're seeing is a trend that is going downward in regards to both of those. So while some people, we may not for a while be able to or ever get rid of this virus, but we can manage the virus in a way that it will not be deadly. And that is what is important. And as far as Dr. Damsker goes, and I, I know that I defend him quite a bit, but for those who constantly question him and say that we should be following the state and federal guidelines, he led the way in those efforts as well as our district. Because unlike, contrary to the belief of some of the comments that we received, we looked at data and we did not follow an agenda. We looked at science and we looked at what was most important for our community. And so I respectfully disagree with some of those comments and I understand, you know, cases are rising and that can be somewhat uncomfortable. Absolutely. So I get that and I appreciate our nurses. I do. And I know that we are demanding a lot of them. But I want everyone to see a light at the end of the tunnel here because we're looking at returning to some sense of normalcy. That is exciting. That should be, we shouldn't be talking about this doom and gloom. We should be saying, hold tight till the finish line, guys. We're almost there. Mask, social distance, so on. Not impending doom. And I, I really was bothered by that, that statement. Okay, so John and Brian, I think you wanted to share something?
Yeah, I just also wanted to say that it's not fair, so to speak, to say we didn't listen to the nurses. Actually listened quite intently. Just because we might choose some different path doesn't imply not listening. There's a lot of different inputs. And for me, this is about reducing the, the number of days a child is not in school learning. So that's the intent to reduce, like if you think of the area under the curve, for those of you who've remembered that from calculus, right, we have a lot of area under the curve, a lot of kids taken out of the learning setting. So if we track the number of days lost, the in-person learning, that's really also a stat. And that's a statistic that unfortunately I think takes a very large backseat, but it's a very real statistic because that's our prime directive here is to educate our children. So it's a balancing act. There's no right or wrong. And I am comfortable going forward because like the entire time we've been open, we've always said, no matter what our policy is, no matter what we think, it's, it takes a lot of humility to not think you're right. And it also is very egotistical to think it's your way or the highway. The point is, we've adopted an approach that says, even if we think we're doing the best thing, we're not gonna trust that. If we see the numbers go up, boom, we change. So in some sense, it doesn't matter who's right, Dr. Damsker or Dr. Whoever. The point is, we are going to react if we see things going the wrong way. That's the safety valve. That's what counts. Frankly, that's about, you know, that's the biggest thing that I think everyone should take away. We are not disrespecting this disease, but we are balancing against having kids learn. That's why they're here. And if they're not in-person learning and we don't get the kind of results that we need, you know, that carries forward for years. That's the long-term penalty of a short-term view. So that's kind of my, my perspective. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Reimers.
Thanks, Kalen. So while I agree with a lot of what Mr. Ween said and, and I think we are putting a whole lot more emphasis on the opinion of one person, Dr. Damsker, than I think we should, that's really not what I want to talk about. John brought it up and so did Ryan, I think in his, in his statement about the idea of pivoting. We made the decision last time to, to move into this modified quarantine. I still don't think it's a good idea. But now that we're there, I want to know what that pivot looks like. Who, who controls when we have to pivot? What criteria are we following that determines that we have to pivot? Who makes the decision? That's the answers I want to know. And I think that we should have done that before, but now we're here and I would like to have those answers. I know I asked them in an email earlier in the week. So if anybody can answer that, I would, I would love to hear that.
Um, I, I am, I'm perfectly fine with that discussion. I think if, if we could move on with the meeting, you know, we typically with public comments, try not to, you know, go on and, and comment on all of them, however, we do sometimes. But I don't, I want to make sure we continue on with our agenda and that's a valid question and we'll make sure that we address it. It sound good?
Thank you.
There was, there was one question about when are we returning in person, when are we coming back to in-person returning? That was, I think, one of the first, first things read. Should we talk about that now or later?
Yeah, let's table it. Um, because.
We'll have some, we'll have something in the education committee report.
Great. Yeah. And I think that kind of ties into a little bit of some of the other questions, so.
And I did have those questions about the senior prom and summer school.
Yeah, I was gonna take, I was actually not gonna ask about summer school, so that's a good addition. Chris, so I was gonna turn it over to Dr. Harner and maybe just give us a little bit of an idea of what you were thinking about prom and graduation planning. I'm sure a lot, there's a lot of interest in that.
Thank you very much, ma'am. I asked Matt V to step into our meeting as a panelist. Hey, there he is. Matt, would you give the, the board and the community update where we're at?
Yeah, certainly. And I've received a couple of requests this week from parents as well via email. I actually had an opportunity to meet with the prom committee today, at the end of the day today. So the, the prom committee has been meeting and as you know, there are a lot of different variables to be considered. I am aware other schools have announced a date. They're not that much further in their planning than we are, but they did announce dates, which I think called some people. We, we have a proposal ready for the administration. I have not presented it yet to Dr. Hunter Nancy and Ms. Edwards. They will be presented with that tomorrow morning. And so the proposal, I believe, falls well within the parameters of our district's health and safety plan, which is obviously one of the, the difficulties for the prom committee to make sure that we maintain within our health and safety plan. But the committee came up with a nice proposal that I'll be presenting to the administration tomorrow morning. So I hope to be able to inform the community of, of an exact plan sometime early next week when we have, have a chance to walk through the plan and kind of fine-tune everything. We did meet with the committee from graduation perspective. We did meet with the committee from graduation perspective. I was a question, I think, about that as well. Graduation, we had sent out surveys to both students and parents. With basically our current, call it our current situation and obviously what we updated as other health and safety information comes in and if restrictions get lifted or if things get more restricted, we'll adjust that plan. The survey was basically saying, would you rather have one ceremony for all students to graduate, say about four hundred students plus? With each student receiving two tickets to the to the graduation ceremony? Or would you rather have two separate ceremonies and be able to receive four tickets for graduation? So the student surveys came back overwhelmingly in favor of one ceremony. The students really want to graduate with their peers, even if that means that they are limited to two tickets, knowing that the event will be livestreamed for free for everybody. And so that was about a two-thirds to one-third vote there. And the same survey went out to parents. The parents had one other choice between, so they had the same two choices. And their third choice was that they really didn't have an opinion and would prefer for their child to make the decision. And so basically let the students decide. That survey also came back with a majority in favor of one ceremony. It was not quite as large a majority, but there was also a good number of people who responded that they would let the the students decide what they would prefer. And that survey came out in a majority of one ceremony. So we're looking at one ceremony on June eighteenth, seven thirty PM. Doors open at six forty-five. And we are working hard on the details of the actual ceremony right now. And 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 once we have the prom conversation, I'll be able to communicate everything in one email for parents. So it's a one-stop shop. And we'll create a website webpage as well that will go live next week. And then the last thing I think that might be of interest here is that the parade we will have this year again, that was a big hit in the community, true community event. And will be along the same route as last year. I already received an email from some parents who live, or actually one particular parent who lives on the route and has already said that they're going all out with decorating of their house and are trying to get their neighbors to go in on that as well to really make this a community field, community event and and special for our students. And so that is on Tuesday, June fifteenth at five thirty start. The parking lot will open at five o'clock for 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 arrival of the cars. And then, like I said, the same parade route. Each of those events will have rain dates following that date because it is all outside and therefore it will all have rain dates. So the parade will be, the rain date will be the following Wednesday and Thursday, whereas graduation that Friday will have rain dates the following Saturday. And then Monday, we're gonna skip over Sunday. So that's in short, I hope to have more detailed information to the community very early next week after I have a chance to speak with the upper administration of the prom proposal.
All right. Did that answer your questions?
I did have a one, is the prom committee also considering junior and senior prom or just senior?
No, so there are actually two committees. There's one for the junior prom, one for the senior prom. This is the senior prom. The junior prom committee and the representatives of the junior class have actually decided to postpone their event to September of next school year to have a better chance of having a an event that that would be nice for them. And and that will not be later than September, but they had decided that that was a better option than trying to do it over the summer.
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Matt.
I was just curious, are they still gonna have a senior prom then?
Yes, the junior class will not, will so that their event in September will not have any impact on what's happening later on in the year.
All right. And we're gonna move into the superintendent report. Before I do that, I forgot that I wanted to mention something earlier. And I'm I'm giving this advice not only to you, other board members, but also to myself. And one of the reasons I really want to get back into in-person meetings, I think that these meetings make it really difficult for us as we're talking over each other and when things get heated, then we have a tendency to want to interject. And so I'm asking board members, and I'm also reminding myself, just a gentle reminder to all the board members to give respect to everyone as they're expressing their opinions. And hopefully, we can figure out a way to get back in person. I I just feel like the in-person meetings make that easier, even though it's not avoidable entirely. So with that, Dr. Harner.
Thank you, ma'am. Superintendent Report, I believe I can promise it's gonna be short. First, the first item is read only. The last, the third and fourth items are read only. So the only item we have, I believe, right now is an update on the health and safety plan, request for your approval to make some changes to open things up a little bit more in accordance with your philosophy and guidance and state and federal mandates. Ms. Edwards.
Good evening. This, as Dr. Harner promised, will be brief. Joe, if you could get the presentation up there. Thank you for prefacing it with the flag. That's very nice. Okay, we can go to the first slide. The first thing I wanted to do is just update you a little bit on the planning to implement modified quarantine next week. We have worked with the Department of Health and Dr. Damsker, met with principals so they could do more detailed planning at the building level. Collected a lot of specific logistical kinds of questions that Dr. Damsker and the Department of Health were very quick to respond to, give us that guidance. I'm not gonna go through all of the 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 next few slides. They're more there for the community's information, but Joe, if you just go to the next one so people can see a selection. So all of the questions that principals or nurses or anyone presented in terms of how we would do the implementation are asked and and answered. And there's four or five slides to to go through that just have all those questions. So if you have questions about how things actually will will look or get implemented, the question and answer are probably in there. So it just illustrates the detail with which our buildings have approached the the planning to implement this. The other thing that I wanted to bring to you is there have been some changes in the requirements or in the the things that are okay for vaccinated adults to do. And so there's some changes that we wanted to recommend to the health and safety plan to reflect that reality now, because all school employees have had the opportunity to be vaccinated. And by, I want to say, the twelfth, everyone who participated in that effort will be two weeks post-vaccination. So now that that has occurred, some changes that we wanted to recommend is allowing our student teachers and interns who have been vaccinated to complete their student teaching work or intern work in the live in the school environment. They've been doing that virtual throughout this year. Also wanted to provide the opportunity for some of our district-level staff who are working with with teachers or staff in buildings to have, you know, a live option. Elementary strings because Ms. Edinger goes to every building. She's been doing a lot virtually and really wanted an opportunity to be live with students in in buildings, so she would be able to create a a schedule to do that. And letting buildings resume in-person faculty meetings with social distancing and and masking. And again, they've been virtual throughout the year. Couple other things that have been requested is we have not allowed any students to go home on a different bus at all this year. We're recommending we allow the bus pass process that's been used in the past to resume. And from the rental standpoint, suggests that we make outdoor venues available for for rental again. So those are the changes that are that we'd like to recommend that you approve to the health and safety plan. One additional note that is not part of the plan that you need to approve, but the Pennsylvania Department of Health did issue some different guidelines for fully vaccinated adults and their ability to meet in in groups while unmasked. So within our building, within district office, for example, we are gonna start to implement some of those those things that the amendment to the mandatory mask order allows. And the the bottom line is if everybody's vaccinated, then you can meet without masking. If that's not the case, then masking is still required of all participants. So that in a nutshell, that's the the impact of the change. So it's not not something you have to approve, but just so you know that we're we're moving forward in that area as well. That's that, short and sweet.
Will this make it possible for more in person or to possibly do these meetings in person? Moving into the future then, Ms. Edwards?
What what meetings are you talking about?
Board meetings.
Well, the the rule right now is that if everyone has is vaccinated, then you can meet in a room without masking. Otherwise, the masking requirements are still applying.
What if we get, we're gonna get creative some kind of way, guys. I'm gonna figure it out.
I'm ready to go.
Me too. Shower curtains. I've seen teachers do. I mean, we're gonna figure this thing out. I can't do this anymore. I'm going crazy, guys. I need to see your faces. Anyhow, that was a really, that was concise superintendent report. Good job. All right, we're gonna move on to our standing committee.
One second, Joe. One second, please. Joe, would you put the recommendations back up? Do we have them later on in the board agenda for approval?
They are.
We could knock it out simply by just making a motion to support and
Mr. Jackson, so moves.
Okay.
Mr. Kern seconds.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Would this be a good time to to answer those questions that I asked?
I don't see why not. I was gonna, that's why I was gonna say, you know, let's maybe wait to have that discussion. But but by all means, since it's sort of tied.
It's the end of the superintendent's report, believe it or not.
Now, now, now we're gonna get Brian's question, so.
I would like to hear them before I vote because
Yeah, we shouldn't vote without having all the questions answered. If we have to move it, let's move it. But what do you want to do?
Can can we motion? Can we table this vote now, Mr. Garten?
Well, somebody would have to make a motion to table it.
Table the motion and you can come back to it and you have to vote on the motion to table.
This this whole circle thing again.
Yes, why are we not? Why are we not just talking about it?
Yeah, I don't.
You can answer the questions now.
Down to the end of the meeting, is there something magical gonna happen at that time?
We all turn into pumpkins.
Brian, why don't you restate your question and then we can allow some dialogue around that?
Sure. So I had a couple of questions and sort of all centered around the the idea of, well, what happens or how do we decide? So, you know, a lot of, there was a lot of talk last time about being able to pivot. But we didn't really outline or define who was going to be able to make the decision to pivot, how that how that pivot and what we would pivot to, how that pivot would would happen. You know, what what other model would it would we we go to in the short term? And those are questions I think I would have liked to have had answered before we even discussed this and voted on it. But, you know, here we are. So.
So Brian. Okay, so so what I was gonna mention here is that the this isn't necess, this isn't necessarily related to to Nancy Ann's recommendations for board action here. But, you know, we we can have this discussion, you know, these recommendations aren't really, you know.
It is because we're we're talking about whether or not to approve the recommendations to what the health and safety plan is gonna be. And these are going to answer, or I, in my opinion, these are questions related to the health and safety plan.
Okay, yeah. We could do that. So what what my
What's that? Sorry to interrupt, but maybe let's just let the administration, the other ones do it. It's not us.
That's actually who I would like to hear from, Chris.
Let the folks who do it answer the question, because we've been doing it before modified quarantine. So I'm sure Nancy Ann can tell us how we react to cases and things like that.
Yeah, John, John, you're absolutely right, but to to Brian's direct question, the question was, the the comment made at the last board meeting was, if something happens, we can pivot. And like you were like, who decides what that nature is? Brian, if you recall, the 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 board members who voted to support the modified quarantine in their presentation, in their comments, were very clear that this is not a hard and fast thing. If cases change, if 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 data changes, then we can react. No, no, but again, my assumption is simply, and and, you know, people, others can clarify. My assumption was, you know, we're gonna get from the administration, hey, we're getting email blast from Dr. Hart. He's gonna get email blast from the nurses. Hey, there's a spike in cases. Hey, you know, the the number of people out is significant. Hey, a lot of teachers are out all of a sudden. Hey, something's happening here. We need to react. Okay?
But but there's
We would have to react at that point.
I'm sorry. That's part of my point on, you know, we can call an emergency meeting and that's great, but that's still, we have to advertise it for ten days before we can have the meeting.
No, twenty-four hours.
That's not the way it was explained to me, so I apologize.
This before. During this pandemic, we had an emergency meeting for a similar situation. So I think the administration can tell us how they would react and we can just, and how they involve us. You'll hear. It's not random.
Okay, do we want to hear? I mean, does the administration want to elaborate further on that? I mean.
Would you like to? Here.
Well, I, my understanding from the motion and the vote last time is that this is in Dr. Damsker's hands. So if he were to recommend that we and the the authority to put a student on modified quarantine is coming from the Department of Health, not the school district. Because it's a, it's a Department of Health designation. So I I really don't know how he would handle a change in the number of cases or whatever. But I would imagine he might just stop approving people for modified quarantine if he felt that was that was warranted. But I I don't, I don't have a district, there isn't a district level you know, method to go about this. We're following that advice. That was the direction, as I understand it, that we've been given.
That is, I would interpret it the same way. And I think the reason why it's the most, it's the safest option is because none of us are are public health experts. So I, the way that I am understanding it is that I I do feel confident that if our administration felt there was a significant issue, that they would bring that to our attention and that they would, you know, we could at that point call for an emergency meeting. And the the other comfort that I have is that if Dr. Damsker were to see or the health department were to see an issue, that they would also address that. So we have not only our public health department, but we also have our administration could share concerns and we could always adjust.
But I think there's, I think, I think I I think, though, like, let let me be clear on what we're talking about, because modified quarantine and and pivoting, if we see a large increase in my mind, are two separate issues. They're they're not one and the same, right? So there's clear guidance on when when a school has to pivot based on cases. So because we changed modified quarantine, we can't just assume the numbers are automatically gonna rise. And if we kept it the same, we can't assume that they're gonna rise or stay the same. So there's no, what what we're trying to do is not make assumptions on the future, right? Which is what we're getting told from everybody else. Keep it the same, they're gonna go up. You know, if you remember back in into November, the cases that were going on in Pennsylvania at the time we opened up, we were told the same thing. at the time we opened up, we were told the same thing, were like double, if not triple, the number of cases we have today, and yet in our schools, we didn't see it. Now granted, there may be variants that are affecting kids differently, but our caseload as a state are way, way down, and I think we need to be clear on one other issue that was brought up earlier, which is we didn't listen to the administration, which is again, I don't believe to be factual, we listened, in fact, if you remember back to November and December and into January, when we talked about modified quarantine, they asked us to hold off, because the cases were going up, at which point we did, and we all agreed that when the cases went down, we would reevaluate it. So this notion that we're not listening to anybody is actually not totally accurate. We have, we haven't listened in total to everything, and remember that's, that, you know, our jobs are representing our community base, and I have not, I've had more people say thank you for the schools being open and for us addressing these issues than I had for people saying, we need to stay closed and we need to stay inside. So let's make sure we're talking about the same thing, modified quarantine being one of them, and pivoting if the school shows cases on the rise, being another issue.
And, and Brian, what, what I would, or, and to Keith's measure too, what, what I would bring up is, modified quarantine is not a relaxation of our health and safety plan. It is not, you can laugh, but it really isn't. So modified quarantine has showed in, shown in the districts that are practicing it the same, if not better, results than we've shown in our district.
I don't wanna get into a Dr. Damsker.
Well, no, no, this isn't a Dr. Damsker, this isn't a Dr. Damsker thing.
Hold on, so.
I was talking and you interrupted me this time.
This is where I need a gavel, bang, bang, bang.
But so what I was saying was, we are not relaxing our health and safety plan by moving to modified quarantine, and, and you know, the, the notion that our, our health and safety plan has worked, why change it? Well, for the 900 students that missed an average of, what, seven days apiece on quarantine, it hasn't worked. For the hundreds of students that are failing three or more subjects, it hasn't worked. So we can't keep going forward and saying, because our health and safety plan has worked in the past, we, we shouldn't change it. Well, guess what? Nobody has died, nobody has been, been put on a ventilator from our district, but nobody has also died or been put on a ventilator in Pen Ridge or Palisades and coming up to join us in Central Bucks next week. So we're not relaxing our health and safety plan, we're fixing our health and safety plan, and, and as far as the pivot goes, as, as far as the pivot goes, yes, if we have significant in-school spread, even Dr. Damsker in the past has said he would not hesitate to, to act on that, he would recommend we close our schools. If, if we have, you know, six, seven, whatever the number is, cases, if it's uncontrolled spread, so I, what you're probably looking for today is a number, you're not gonna get that, I don't, I don't.
I'm not looking for a number. I'm looking for who has controlling command of that decision.
I believe the public health department.
And, and I think that in the short term, before we can meet, whether it's 24 hours or 10 days, I think it has.
Your next.
Administration, and they have to be able to have that, that ability to make that pivot when they, if they see something happen. And last time, we took that power away from them in a way, because we, we changed the attestation number, and we directed them to stay open if they see that lower number.
The one thing I don't wanna do with this, is what I feel like, and Mr. Kern, I'm gonna get to you next, I feel like this is starting to devolve into rehashing something we already voted on.
And.
We've already voted, we've already voted on modified quarantine, we've already given the direction.
I also, I'm sorry.
The public health, uh, they, they are the experts. Mr. Kern, go ahead.
Yeah, so I, I'm sensitive to Brian's question, because I want him to understand, and, and he, I, I was trying, and Keith, you said exactly where, where I was headed. I'm not talking about modified quarantine, Dr. Dams, that's not the pivot, the pivot is just like we do today, if Nancy Ann and Dr. Harners see something horrible happening, boom, they're gonna act. It's no different today than it was last week, than it was last month, that's the response. I expect the administration, they're looking at these numbers every day, just like we get those, you know, school closing, the yellow alerts, whatever those things are, that's still in place, we don't have to call Dr. Damsker to say, hey, look at our net, right? Nancy Ann, I, I expect Nancy Ann and Dr. Harner are still doing that, that's the safety net, that's what we're talking about. So if modified quarantine has a negative impact on cases, they'll see it and will react, that's.
And that's what I'm hoping for.
Right, and that's my safety valve, right? And it's important that you understand that, because that's, that's how I'm interpreting it, is, you know, we're, no matter what, we're still doing that, we're not just gonna count on some miracle policy that we put in force, we're gonna still do what we have been doing by the administration.
And one thing I would, I would say too, that's encouraging, is I have been seeing the communication that's been occurring between the public health department and our, our staff, our nurses and, and our administration, and they have been working hand in hand. They have been, you know, answering questions, trying to understand better how this is gonna be implemented, and so I have the most confidence that it will, it will work well.
Also, somebody's comment online or, or in the chat, when they had said, you know, just because students are quarantined doesn't mean they can't learn, I, I understand that, and so do most other people, but there are a lot of students that cannot learn, that have not been learning very well virtually, you know, there's some that if you take them out of the in-school program, they're, they're gonna plummet, and, and that's, that's the ones we really have to look for. I understand, you know, there are kids that are, are doing great in virtual, and there are kids that can even, you know, survive a 10, 14 day, some have had 21 day quarantines, and you know, they can get through it just fine, but there are others that definitely cannot.
I, I also did have one other request, question, whatever you wanna call it, and that, you know.
Not the same points, I hope, Brian.
Throughout this whole thing, and thank you for, for that, throughout this whole thing, we've had this nursing update, this read-only nursing update, I ask that that continue, because last time, there was a lot of comments about how that, the decision that we made would make their job easier, and I'd like to continue hearing from them to see if that's true, or if it's not, and if it's not, how can we help them going forward, and what can we do to, to make it easier for them? Because.
Right, as I recall from that conversation, I think, I think Chris was the only one to mention that he, he thought that it would make their, their job easier. I don't know that any of us agree or disagree with that, we didn't even discuss, I mean, so when there was a lot, when you use the word a lot, I don't believe there was a lot, I didn't, I didn't necessarily believe that.
Right, I apologize, he said it quite a few times, so.
I believe that their, their job is going to continue to be rough as we continue through this pandemic, just like everybody else in healthcare, who, who's facing this every single day. So it's no different, it, it is a very, you know, trying time for every healthcare worker, including our public health, including our school nurses, including our frontline staff in the hospitals and elsewhere, so I, I don't know that their job's gonna get easier, and that's why I specifically asked, was this a workload issue versus a, a medical, you know, sort of discussion, because there's two, again, there are two separate issues in my mind, one in which we can handle by, you know, from a board level, by approving that more, more staff to come in and help them, and that's something that we, we need to know, right? The board can do something about that, you know, offer a temporary, or, or imposition or something like that, or nurse position, so I agree with you, we need, we need to be fed that information. And, and I, and I, but I, I, you know, still, I mean, you know, the last board meeting, we had some really strong facts thrown at us, and I haven't seen any data from anybody at the administrative level give us anything to talk about, you know, where we saw this increased spread, unless I missed an email, which I may have happened, that, that we were very concerned about, that we heard in the presentation, so, and, and I don't know that we've got it from the Department of Health, I don't, I don't know where that information is.
I can actually address that, because I did speak to Ms. Edwards, and the explanation that I was given was, because I was concerned about the number that we said that was stated, later tested positive, and she said the question she was asked was not necessarily whether, whether that was in-school spread, and she didn't feel like she was able to fully answer the question due to interruptions, so if there's further, if, if you all want further clarification on that.
Well, Ms. Mitchell, I mean, we've, we've kicked this around long enough, there's a motion on the table, I have a second, I, I do wanna let, allow for the two board members who haven't said anything, the opportunity to speak if they so choose, but I'd like to move forward with the motion.
Thank you, Ron, no, I'm just kidding.
That would be Dave or Jen, I'm not sure if Dave or Jen have anything to say. Chris, you zip.
I have nothing to add, and I don't feel I can, because I was not at the board meeting two weeks ago, but I did share because of the vaccination, and I, anyone who knows me knows I've been pretty conservative as far as, you know, opening things up, et cetera, but with the vaccination, the fact that everyone is getting vaccinated so quickly, I'm even vaccinated, I'm no frontline worker, I'm, you know, an attorney that goes to hospitals sometimes, and pretty much everyone in my office is vaccinated, all ages, all health conditions, everything, so, you know, I, I feel with the way things are going, just in general, on, on that whole front, that I think we'll be okay with modified quarantine, I really do.
It's for your feedback, Dave?
With regards to, you know, Brian's question, I, I think I were pretty much mimicked John's sentiments, and I kinda dropped my second John statement in there, because that's pretty much all I, that's pretty much all I would've said, is pretty much what John said, I, I think that the administration will come to us, we are the ones that act, we are the body, we are the final say, we are the ones that make the decision, you know, if we have the data that tells us to make decisions different, we will.
Awesome, really funny to lighten it up really quick, somebody I saw when they got their vaccine, they called it a Fauci ouchie. I thought, I was like, what, who came up with that? That's kind of.
I like it.
Anyhow, let's go ahead and vote, so all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries si, seven to one? Brian, you know we didn't vote on anything having to do with modified, right? We just voted against the administration's recommendations for anyway.
And we answered your questions. But it's cool.
It's all right, it's all good, moving on, moving on. Okay, so who is able to give the education committee meeting report? Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, so this was pretty exciting, really, speaking of spring and green shoots and positive outlooks, we had a couple of elements to the presentation from Dr. Hoffman's group proposed changes to the school start times, so you can see the data in the, if you go to the board docs, you can see this, and there's a lot of really fascinating, it's like a triple whammy, in terms of three positive things happening with one fell swoop, Dr. Hoffman, I don't know if you'd rather describe the, the fact that there's three good positive benefits from changing the school start times, or you want me to summarize it?
Whatever you'd like, I think you're doing a great job, but I'm happy to jump in if.
It's a test, all right, so number one, it has to do with giving an additional 30 minutes of teacher time in the morning, they can do their professional development, collaborate in a, in a nice cohesive block, the kids will get to sleep longer, and again, you can see the times through your different schools, minor shortening of the day here and there, but it's essentially, you know, certainly the, the legal amount of school time, and the busing will be impacted, so it won't be three tiers, it'll be two or two slightly plus, so that'll save money, and the kids, again, the, the, the expected outcome from this is happier, teachers happier, kids more alert, so we expect everything to bump up because of the excessive wellbeing that's gonna come from this, so that's the first thing. And then a proposal for the return to live instruction, woo-hoo, cheers, confetti, ball, emojis, whatever we can put on this goofy Zoom call, but here the idea is, the, the, that was, I think, the first reading, the first comment that was read, was a question about in-person, when can you expect it? This fall, baby, that's, you know, that's what we're aiming for, is to get kids back to the place where we have demonstrated for the past 10-plus years of being awesome at in-school learning, and not to shortchange the, the cyber aspect, so there are plenty of people doing virtual now, and we won't completely just say we're not gonna give virtual, but the idea is, the teachers will do the, their single modality, so to speak, right? We won't be breaking the, the teacher's heads in half by making them do two types, or so, so to replace the, the current amount of virtual, we'll be able to offer a special type of virtual, cyber, we're still coming up with a marketing name for it, so I don't know if I wanna, maybe that's a contest we can have, people can draw logos and have a little contest in school, or what should we call this, this ability to, to provide virtual school to those students who still need it, so that's what's coming, and I don't know if I gave it its fair due, but that's, to me, that's exciting, because that's, that's something that, that I, that I think is so critical to getting our kids back on the track of full day, in-person learning, and so anyway, there and my, there ends my report, Madam President.
Thank you, it is very exciting.
I would only add to take away something, I, I would take away allowing the public to name something, because that always does not turn out well.
Bully McSchoolface?
Yes, exactly.
Come on, it can be entertaining.
One last thing I'd like to add, Mr. Kern, to the education report, is that over the next, in next week or so, I'll send out a blog with a whole bunch of information, references, links to our virtual model for next year, for parents who wanna take advantage of it for their children, and a chart of school start times, how it's gonna impact us going back to our, there'll be a, a minor modification on pre-COVID start times to allow us to have the professional development time with teachers, but I, I think it's very exciting, like you said, it, it gets a check mark in about three or four different areas, thank you.
Yes, thank you, O T L.
All right, thank you, guys, and we're gonna move on to our facilities report, Mr. Spear.
Okay, now it's my turn. So we met last Thursday, and we had discussed the, the BCIU, the, the Bucks County Intermediate Unit had requested that we provide space for them to set up a head start program in our sixth grade center, and we have been looking to give them two classrooms within that center, which would provide sort of like a head start program, it, kind of a preschool program for children that would need it, that would be ages, usually ages three to five, that would benefit our community. We met with Mr. Thompson and Dr. Locke from the IU, and it looks like it would be a good proposal for our district to move forward, to bring those two classrooms into the sixth grade center from the IU. The custodial services, we discussed those, the administration briefed the committee on the current sanitation process, which has temporarily taken back, has been taken, temporarily taken back in-house due to inconsistencies with SSC staff, meeting the nightly requirement. The focus of the conversation, however, was that the staffing concerns with SSC and the daily cleaning impacts, some of the rooms were not being cleaned, as was brought up in the last public meeting that we had here. SSC has provided proposals to increase the wage rates in order to be more competitive and be able to hire and retain more staff. We also discussed QE, Dewey Engineering and the Schrader Group are progressing with their study of QE, and we're in the building on April 5th, they expect to bring options and costs to the board in May for review and future decision-making. The baseball field conversation. The baseball field conversation got ramped back up. I know we, we were having a lot of that pre-COVID and then it sort of took a back burner for a little bit, but now we, we had a pretty lengthy discussion on what and how we could provide a home for our baseball team, a home field. So we had instructed or on the agenda tonight, I believe, Zach, my, my printout's kind of cut off here. Is it, is it on the agenda tonight for us to approve Dewey Engineering to evaluate that land on Pumping Station Road that the district owns?
That is correct. They'll not only evaluate the land, they'll provide some costs analysis on what it would take to put a baseball field on there as well. And they're going to give us various options from a single field to a stadium-like field and kind of run the gambit. So you have things to look at.
Okay, good.
Can I, can I ask a question? Is it now or later after you're done your report?
I don't know. You could ask me now, I guess. Is it for me or for someone else?
Regarding the baseball field, so I ran into somebody in the community that talked about, is there, you know, like we did with Rasa, is there an opportunity to partner with QYBA? And I, I can't remember what that answer was. Is there ways to fix up their fields, something along those lines? Where we don't have to totally recreate the wheel, but that we would have access to it improvements? Those kinds of things. I know we talked about that area being a little swampy. Is it sort of the same?
Now, I think part, part of it was, we did look at the Connie Mack fields and that area is a bit wet. The, the, the fields aren't the same size. So we would have to make changes to that field. And also if we were to make those changes, I, I believe Zach could probably speak to this better.
We had, the board approved paying Dewey and Boucher and James last year of pre-COVID to, and they're doing analysis of Memorial Park and it took that, took that off the table. We looked at Connie Mack prior to that and it took that off the table. Some of the, the committee discussion was, you know, from the committee, different board members to me personally and, and in, in committee was why, why spend money purchasing land when we have the 126 acres? So we started looking, focusing in on 126 acres and the parcel that's right across from St. Isidore's Church. And also about partnering to, to getting to Mr. McCucci's point about partnering tomorrow, I have a, a meeting with St. Luke's to talk about partnering with them. As you know, they were very generous with us at Alumni Field right, right before COVID or maybe two years ago with their sign and I'm looking for other partners to help offset the costs. Bringing along the other local teams will be important. I've talked to John Pallone. He's connected with everybody in town that plays baseball. So he's, he's looking to bring partners to the table as we bring this concept to fruition for you.
Okay. Is that all you wanted, Keith, from the baseball?
Yeah, they were just telling me they were looking to do something, you know, QYBA was, was looking to do something. I just wanted to make sure we didn't miss anything, you know, as, as you think about community assets. You know, I, I was just thinking about, is there a way we could tie in using some of our taxpayer monies that will go to benefit that organization? It's a communal organization as well, together in that same area that, that, you know, could then maybe later on generate revenue if they host tournaments there to offset some of the long-term costs associated with it. I was just looking at, while I know that it was, it was bigger to, to, you know, and I, and I, thanks for clarifying that, Dr. Horner. I forgot about that. But I just wanted to make sure because if there's a way that down the road, we could offset costs, it may be a little bit more, you know, tolerable to, to spend a little bit more money or, or at least maybe go out and, and take out a loan in conjunction with one another to see, and then pay it back in a different way. That's all I was thinking.
In, in direct conversations with the youth baseball, I have not personally had that. I'm doing all my talking with John Pallone, who is well-connected with that and he's helping me bring in other players. So we can offset our costs and make some revenue in the out years, just like Rasa.
So if I, I don't know, Chris, are you?
I got two more, two more quick little things here. Lawn care contract. We'll be voting or I, I brought both of them up for the board to review. There's two competing bids for the lawn care, lawn care contract. So we'll, we'll bring that up later on in our agenda. And for the capital projects, Dewey Engineer, Dewey Engineering provided a brief update on capital projects for this year that are in the design phase and contracts are in the process of being executed. There were also discussions on adding a dust collector in the woodshop area, but we're going to push that off a little bit while the administration still reviews other options that we could possibly go forward with there. And that is my report.
One question that I had about the cleaning is, does the board need to consider whether or not we need to put additional resources into this, the cleaning? I mean, obviously I know that there's the fact of paying more, but do we need some greater intervention? It seems like that, seems like the, it, there's a big issue with a bottleneck of not having enough staff to do the sanitizing. And I thought. I, I, well, it is, but it's not. It's in there only as to consider providing a greater wage, but it doesn't necessarily, it, we may, that may or may not solve the problem. Do we need to put, bring in another, you know, party to this? All I know is, is that that's a critical part, it seems, to keeping our schools open. And I thought we, I don't remember the numbers, but I thought we invested quite a bit more into sanitizing this year due to COVID. So I was interested in hearing the concerns from the administration about that and whether the board needs to act.
Zach, you want to handle it?
Yeah. So I guess I would start by separating these into three different categories. So there's the night sanitizing, which we're one of the only districts that do this with the fogger machines that they go in. So that's one aspect. The day, daily routine, cleaning of a building, regardless of COVID is the other. And then the deep cleaning piece, which is, you know, as we're notified by, by building principals or whoever, where there's a positive case and they go in and do deep cleaning. So there's three different things we're talking about.
Now, the fogger, can you tell me more about that? I don't know that I'm familiar.
So they just put the chemicals in a fogging machine. They walk around the classroom and the mist is supposed to cover the whole. It's a quick way to, to sanitize a lot of space in, in a little amount of time. So that's the contract that we signed with SSC and the contract that I think you referred to with the additional money, which recently we've identified that the fidelity in which that has been taking place is not, not good. So in the short term, we said, we're not paying you the contract right now. We're going to use those funds and we started taking it in-house and paying our staff overtime to do it. So we have some of those machines. I believe SSC has lent us the machines that they have. And Rob has set up a system where the person in, that's our employee in every building comes in an hour early before school starts and has been completing that process. So we have a fix there, a short-term fix. The deep cleaning piece is something we were able to do. The only time I, I think that that would be a concern is if there's a cluster of cases that come late at night. That's when it can be difficult to do that piece. But in, in general terms, you know, we, we don't really struggle with, with that. We've been doing that very well. We keep a tracking sheet of every time a principal, Nancy, Dr. Horner, Rob, whomever, you know, makes us aware. And then we go in and clean it and keep track of that. The thing that we're struggling with now with staffing is the general routine daily cleaning pieces, which most of it isn't related to COVID, but some of it is because obviously we want to overall have a clean building. Right now they're down about eight or nine staff, which accounts for about 30, 35% of the staff that they're supposed to have. That's been the biggest piece in terms of what's been an issue and exacerbated this year, obviously for, for obvious reasons. So what they did is we've had some conversations. They did raise their rates a little bit and I have it here. They raised it up to $12 an hour from 1125 and obviously that did not get charged back to, to the school district. But it just wasn't enough to move the needle. So they came to us as partners and said, you know, we're, we're, we're hurting here for, for staffing. We're just not able to attract and bring people in at this pay rate. That's, they provided some analysis in the committee meeting as to why. So, you know, I think our biggest concern right now is, is, is staffing and, and I think the fix in the short-term release is a more competitive rate. Because what's happening is the supervisors who are supposed to be supervising all the contracts are doing all the cleaning because we're so short-staffed. I mean, even tonight I asked Laird if he would be able to be present. He's the day, he's the manager. He's like, I'm in the buildings cleaning. So I hope that answers your question.
Do we need to be doing the fogger?
It's part of our health and safety plan. So from that perspective, yes.
But do, I guess, taking a step back, do we, what is the purpose behind that? Now that we know that the surfaces are not as much of an issue as it relates to transmission of COVID, could we alleviate some of the burden, I guess, the stress, the workload by removing that from the health and safety plan? So we could reallocate those resources.
Well, I can say right now, we've already reallocated them because our staff have taken over that, that duty and we're still down eight, eight custodians even after doing that.
Fogger machine is, 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 can you tell her what it does? I think what she knows.
No, he, he told me what it does, but he also said that we're the only ones, it's one of the only ones doing it. I don't know.
At that frequency, yeah. So we do it every single night. I think some districts do it like every other night. Some districts, that's part of their deep cleaning process. I think we have one of the most robust sanitizing, you know, programs that I've at least heard from other districts through, through county or other meetings that I've been part of. We did talk about it at the, I can't remember if it was finance or facilities, just whether or not we were going to continue it or continue it in that capacity for next year or making a recommendation that is there some other ways to use those resources? But for this year, I, I think we have a good.
I would recommend we continue it. We, we do that quite a bit after, not necessarily at the hospital, but there are different areas that do it. EMS does it quite a bit as well, so.
For COVID cases, I get it, but if we're doing it for every classroom every day.
Now, I think it just, it's, it's one of those measures. I, I think for now, I would recommend to continue it.
Okay.
Until we can reevaluate it at the end of.
One change at a time.
I'm just trying to resolve the issue that I'm hearing from a lot of teachers saying that their, their classrooms are not cleaned every night.
So again, cleaning and sanitizing, I've, I've tried to do a good job saying, articulating they're two very different things. But that is not an inaccurate statement that certainly aspects of cleaning have taken a backseat to.
But Zach, they're, they're fogged every night?
Well, yes, they, they're supposed to be fogged every night. We ran into the issue that I just mentioned and now we've taken that duty back in house.
We're, we're moving forward. They're fogged every night?
Every, well, it's every morning now before, before school starts, yes.
Have we have been having any issues with our staff doing that? I mean, is it, is it something maybe we need some temporary staffing of our own to just provide?
No, I mean, was everybody happy that they have to work an extra hour every day? I'm not sure, but it is an hour of overtime pay and we're using the money we would have spent paying the SSC contract to afford to be able to do that. So if they come in normally at six, they're coming in at five or, you know, 6:30, they're coming in at 5:30, which is still, it's earlier for their shift, but even earlier from when the kids come in. So Rob did some research to make sure there's enough time to get it done, have enough time for it to sit there before the, the kids actually come in. But we are, that is getting done every morning in every building.
All righty. I'm going to move on then to the finance committee. Mr. McCucci.
Yeah. Good evening. So we met as a committee last week. We reviewed a brief demo from Power School and the enrollment projection software and process. This was one of the recommendations from the redistricting committee. The finance, finance committee, we, as a finance committee, we recommended discussing it tonight as a full board. The budget updates, administrative, administration provided us an update on the annual budget. The deficit for the current year has dipped below $4 million for the first time, started the year at over $7 million. So the budget for the next year had minor changes and still projects a $2 million deficit with a full tax increase. Also presented was a 0%, a 1.7% scenario. This is excluding any renovations to QE, baseball fields, start times, universal full day kindergarten, et cetera. These costs are not currently accounted for in the budget. So full decisions have yet to be made on them. One of the discussions we had as a finance committee was getting, having a special finance meeting where we'll take a in-depth dive with our current budget so that we all understand where the cost drivers are and, and, you know, understand fully what, what either voting for an increase or 0% means as far as, you know, sort of the daily operations of the district. That meeting will take place on April 21st and I do encourage all the board to attend so that you can hear directly as we move into the May timeframe when we'll be approving in June, the final budget. Full day kindergarten was discussed and universal full day kindergarten. If we implemented it right away, it'd be about a $600,000 increase to the operating budget. If we place it in overtime, this may cost us less. So more to come on that. Federal grants, the administration discussed that roughly 5.2 million in federal grant money the district is projected to receive. The funds must be spent within the next two school years. A draft of recommendations used for these funds was provided, which had a focus on addressing learning loss due to COVID. So someone earlier had mentioned that. A more formal strategic plan will provide, will be provided later on in the school year. Zach, that's what I got. Anything I missed?
No, the only thing that we, we put on every finance committee is just monthly updates on charter school enrollment, food service counts, things of that nature. If anybody, we keep track of it every month because they're, they're cost drivers. So that's it.
Okay.
So everybody mark your calendar.
Put it on your calendar.
I put one on for you.
All right. We're going to move on to our, our policy. Now, Ms. Weed, you were, you were absent for some of that though, right?
I was. So I was going to suggest that those of you that were there for the beginning to discuss revisions or modifications to some disciplinary policies that were raised by Mr. Jackson and others. And it was policy number 218 and 233 that you guys should weigh in on that more. Because then at that point, I'll just generally say that we discussed that a lot at the policy meeting, mainly you guys. I was late. And then we just went through some of the general policies after that and didn't get through our list.
Yeah.
Yes, jump in, someone who was.
I will jump in. So the board did discuss, we were discussing really our philosophy as a board when it comes to discipline. And I think this is something that the board, I would, it's, we're not going to hash this out tonight. I just wanted to put it out there. It's something that the board I think we'll be looking further into is looking at our discipline strategy as it relates to punitive discipline, meaning out-of-school suspensions versus some type of proactive discipline. And I, I started digging into some research here and what I found was that it appears as though there is, there's a shift being recommended due to the data that's out there, due to outcomes that we're seeing. And, you know, just from a practical standpoint, I can say for myself that I, I really try to think about how do out-of-school suspensions, how did that, how does that help a, a student? When you're thinking about a lot of the different issues that, that we face. And then I understand this is a challenge because if you're a principal, you might think, oh, you know, we really need to have some of those things in place. But another thing that I understand is some of our high school principals are trained in some of this proactive measures. I'm not, I can't remember the acronym for it, but their positive behavioral intervention and support, I think that's what it is. And so I, I think that discipline has changed. And one of the things that we talked about, I think it was, I was talking to Dr. Horner about this was, you know, back when. I was talking to Dr. Harner about this was, you know, back when I was in elementary school, now for, don't forget, I'm from the South. We had a paddle that we used, not we, they used. I never got the paddle because I was, you know, so great. But certain students did get received back in years ago corporal punishment for misbehaving. And obviously we've come a long ways from that, that we no longer do that. So I do think it would be great for the board, and again, we don't have to discuss this tonight. But I would like to sort of collectively understand where the board sits as far as their philosophy on discipline. And whether or not we feel that the disciplinary measures that we take are giving us the outcomes that we want. And I would encourage board members to dig into this also from an from, there are some peer reviewed studies that are out there. There are some from the American Academy of Pediatrics. I mean, I mean, there's just a ton of experts that have been weighing in on this who oppose things like out of school suspensions unless there is. It should be an absolute last resort and that there are other ways to intervene to achieve better, more positive outcomes.
Ms. Weed, to be clear, since you mentioned that it was my recommendation to revisit this policy and to try and provide some clarity, any community members who may be listening and to those board members who weren't privy to the conversation. My concern is whether or not we want to have a policy in place where an incident happens with a student and there's a mandatory penalty for that incident without taking into consideration intent or whether or not it was, you know, some kind of prank or joke to not have a hard line. I've been very opposed for a long time to hardline punishments without looking at the facts of the incident. This arose from a recent incident. We've all seen the emails. And I was put it, that put it out there for conversation. We had a lot of conversation. I don't know that it necessarily died. I don't know if it will result in any change. But that was what I recommended, some kind of shift to prevent hardline discipline without consideration of the event itself. And I, we're not going to get into it here. I don't want to get into it here. I want to recommend those people who have similar concerns. Attend the next policy committee meeting and discuss it there.
I just wanted to add onto what Ron said. He had a good question. He brought a great question to the committee. And what we decided to do was not to look specifically at this case, but to look at the policies and to learn more about some of the other mitigating options as far as discipline. So that's something that I look forward to discussing at the next policy committee and hearing a little bit more about some of the things the administration talked about in the last one. And, you know, that's kind of where we were at with that situation.
Yep. When we know better, we do better. It's kind of one of those things like an example I would give is when we incarcerate people who have mental illness or drug addiction. The, you know, is that really providing any sort of, hey buddy, rehabilitative, I'm not saying that right, services? So, so anyway, that is something that for the future that, that the board, the policy committee would be looking at. So Jenny, outside of that and some revision of the, some of those policies, do you have anything else to add?
I, I do not, except that Ms. Mitchell needs to nominate or pick some new policy chair. This is my last meeting. So.
Yeah, I, I am going to have to put some thought, some more thought into that and I will let the board know. And I, I don't know if it's now the appropriate time, but I would like to let everyone know who's listening that Ms. Weed is going to be resigning. And I don't mean to steal your thunder because that's for sure for you to share, but I did want to just thank you for all of your service. You know, we've been together. You, you have been, I'm actually really sad because now I'm going to be the only female.
We do need, we do need another female.
Yes.
The replacement works. I, I hope that there's a woman out there that, that steps up because there's a lot of testosterone on this board. Sorry, guys, but there is.
And you're leaving me all alone and not, but I am.
I know.
But I am so, I am so happy for you and I'm thankful for everything that you've done for the board and your service. And did you want to share anything with the rest of us here?
Well, I wanted to give, this, this year has been tough with COVID and I really wanted to just give a shout out in general. I am leaving as, as the board and administration knows because we're, we're moving. We've sold our house. It sold very quickly. A very, well, he may be a jerk. I don't know. But as St. Louis, St. Luke's doctor is moving in and Chris will like this. He's coming with three kids. So there you get a net. If he sends them to, to PAF and to, to, anyway, to, to the district. But my daughter is going to graduate from college in Massachusetts next year. And we moved here when she started first grade at PAF. She was one of the first. I think they were the first class in that new building at PAF. And then she went all the way through Milford and then of course graduated from the high school. And I have to tell you what a great experience we had with this district. And I really hope people appreciate that and appreciate how important public education is. She is now at a very good liberal arts university in Massachusetts. She will be graduating magna cum laude next year. A great background that she got here. And, you know, she's also was a big soccer player and is a starting goalkeeper there. And I attribute a lot of, you know, her development and success to the outstanding teachers she had through the beginning when she was six years old, up until she graduated at 18 and the administration. So I really hope that the community and people here understand what a, what a good district we've got here, what a good school district. So that's it. And it has been a tough year and I think the administration has handled it really well. I really do. It's been hard.
And you did part of volunteering for the board to make this a great district.
That's true.
Yeah. I mean, I, I just in general, I mean, I've only been on it this one term, but I, I just think it's a a really good school district and I hope the community and people under, out there understand. Morgan's still in touch with some of her high school teachers, which I think is awesome.
I can't help but remember, you know, when some of us started this, you know, media watching, being at the grad, bringing it your daughter's graduation in high school and now four years just flew by like that and like, like it was yesterday.
I know.
Crazy.
You know, makes me sad, but.
I was shocked when you just said that she was graduating from college next year because I thought the same thing, Dave. Wow. Time flies.
I had hair.
Oh, that's so funny.
I was bald then too.
Well, thank you, Jenny, so much. We're going to miss you.
We will. Thank you.
Appreciate your service. All right, I'm going to move on now to the next item that's on our agenda. And that is going to be Upper Bucks Technical School, Mr. Akmanowicz.
Since our last board meeting, there was a additional technical school meeting. It was a special meeting. And normally I really don't talk about subcommittee meetings, but this one was really kind of intense and kind of important, the subject matter. And I suspect this might be a little bit of a conversation starter here. I'm kind of hoping for some feedback from you guys. But my report is that in the programs committee, they're suggesting, the administration is suggesting to the JOC that we merge the baking program with the culinary arts program because the culinary arts program does have a baking portion inside of it. And it's, and they think that based on the amount of past year first requests for baking as well as some statistical information from the industry as far as the average pay rate for bakers. That it's kind of like an industry that is not in really high demand and it's not a really great. You know, baking as a standalone program may not be the best way to utilize the district's resources. And maybe a larger enhanced baking program that has a larger baking component would be the way to go. And so they're suggesting or recommending that we consider that as the JOC. And then obviously that kicked off, a lot of people attended the meeting and we're talking about it and, you know, there's lots of passion. But one of the things that I think we really should keep in mind from this is, you know, I was really leaning the way, you know, spoilers of the change. But at the end of the call, I kind of am in the middle of the table again, and I see the merit in a standalone baking program in a world where standalone baking program really doesn't exist. That they are far and few between is the sentiments. And so, and, and what I, what I hear is the people in the baking program want to take only baking, not the other cooking thing. So, you know, I kind of want to bring this to you guys so that I can get some feedback from you. I could have somebody from the tech school join us on the next call if y'all want. But it is, you know, something we're talking about over there. So if you all have any feedback for me, I think it would be helpful for us on the JOC.
Hey, Dave, I, I wanted to bring up and possibly even have Dr. Hoffman comment because I believe she, she goes through all of it. She goes through all of the, the, the meetings with, about the programs at the tech school and also helps with the registration process, I believe, correct? Dr. Hoffman. So she, she would have that, that firsthand insight in how many kids are signing up for baking and how many kids this would affect if this merger were to take place. And besides her personal attachment to this program. But, you know, I, I just wanted to see from, from the statistical standpoint of our district, how many kids this would impact and how many it would negatively impact. Or Dr. Harner.
Is that something that you want, that, that they can, should investigating it back to us on? Or is there a general comment?
There's only like eight to 12 kids. So like in the end, it's probably an average of four kids we're talking about directly from our district, most likely. I mean, it's not going to be a substantial number of our tech school kids.
But that's why I wanted to ask.
But it's important though. I mean, the philosophy of it, I think is important and whether it's one kid or five kids, many kids.
Dr. Hoffman, would you share the couple, couple major points that you and I have talked about? You attended the meeting. You attended the meeting and you, and I've attended the superintendent's meetings there. And so I have a little bit of insight after you're done.
Sure. Thanks for the opportunity. I did, did attend the meeting. I, I do want to provide full disclosure that I attended as a parent though, and not in my, in my current role, though of course it is hard to turn that off, but I did attend the meeting as a parent. My suggestion after listening to the meeting and what I spoke to Dr. Harner about would be potentially for the tech school to have a separate meeting where they could invite myself and my counterparts in the other districts to come in and talk a little bit more about the programs, where they see some of the overlap and how we could best support that being a change that in my opinion may take a little bit longer than, than what it's proposed right now to, to shift rather quickly, in my opinion. I think we need to look at some of those skills. A lot of the questions for those that were on the meeting came out of looking for data in terms of the curriculum and the skills. And personally, that's not something that I've actually looked into. But I would welcome the opportunity to meet with them and go through that curriculum so that I could better answer the questions about where some of that redundancy is and how we could best support our students who want to learn baking as a trade as opposed to more of a culinary trade. I do think there is absolutely room for us to provide a quality program that covers both. And I liked the ideas that were presented about allowing students in their senior year to go into focused co-ops. But again, I would need to see that that's actually an articulated agreement that those opportunities exist for our students. I can tell you that in terms of our placement for our district, we typically have enough students who would like baking as a first choice and culinary as a first choice in order to fill our spots because we only usually get about maybe five or six new spots a year. So we typically don't actually even get to go into second choices, which is a good and a bad thing. This year, we still have about 29 students on the waiting list for technical school spots, even though we have our largest enrollment yet. So we continue to try to find places to put them, but it's hard to say whether or not in baking and culinary this shift would really affect how many students we place because the majority of students do pick culinary and baking as a first and second choice. So if they don't get culinary, they ask to be put in baking. And if they don't get baking, they ask to be put in culinary. So it's a little difficult for me to answer that without actually speaking to the kids or diving into it. Not that answers your question, but that's kind of where I sit.
As it was briefed to the superintendents on Tuesday at our monthly superintendent's meeting with Palisades, Ben Ridge and myself and Mr. Sweet are doing the presenting. Baking has been traditionally under-enrolled in previous years. Next year, it looks like its enrollment currently is, is better than it's been. It, as Dr. Hoffman talked about, first and second choices. The most sought after is the culinary program by far from what the statistics I've been presented by the director. And, and this, and there's not enough room. And that's why the growth of the, is requested of merging the two programs. And when they don't get culinary, they're put over in baking. So that's how they've made their numbers up. Their numbers look really good over the last couple of years, but it's because of second choices.
Okay. It's very good context. Mr. Akmanowicz, did you want to, did you have other items for your briefing here?
No, no. Did any other board members have anything they want to share by any chance in regards to that? That would conclude my report if nobody has anything to say.
Okay, thank you, sir. All right, moving on. Mr. Jackson, you have the Bucks County IU Legislative and the Ed Foundation.
In the tradition of keeping my briefings brief, the IU met last March 16th. The summary of all items passed and the awesome news summary of wonderful things happening there are on your board docs. Please review at your leisure. We also get a legislative report at that time from the IU Legislative Director. Her report is included there. Please review as well. The Ed Foundation did not meet. They meet next week. I'll have a report later on that. That's the end of my three reports, ma'am.
Thank you. I, I was looking at that. We got, we got a lot of teachers vaccinated at the IU. So that is awesome. I am going to skip over my president's report. Everything I wanted to discuss, we've already done so. And the next item is for board discussion is the decision insight power school enrollment projection software demonstration. And this was something that was presented to the finance committee. The proposal is attached as well as the reports and the fees. So I just to be clear on this, am I, is this just for discussion or is someone going to motion for this? That I'm not clear on.
At this point, my recommendation would be that we, so, so in the question that was, that was asked by several board members was, is the current way we're looking at our enrollment projections accurate? And is there anything else that could help us with a, with a, you know, sort of shed a different light on it, looking at different factors? And so Power School presented to us what data they look at. Now ultimately, and John, keep me honest here. They came up with the same sort of you know, gap that, that we currently, that currently exists today. And I think that gap was, you know, there could, they could be off by, you know, as low as like two and a half percent and as high as, I don't know, four and a half or 5%. So, which is, which is, I think roughly where we're at. But there may be some validity with, with taking a look at it in the sense that it will either confirm or deny where we're at and we can then rest assured based on, you know, sort of their modeling and our modeling that, that adjustments are, are going to be, needed to be made in one area or another, right? Now Jenny Weed selling her house has completely thrown off our numbers.
You know, it, it has because I paid the top tax bracket. But don't forget Keith, someone's coming in in three weeks. Don't forget. Don't forget Keith, coming in, someone's coming in in three weeks. Don't forget.
Blow up the way we're doing it and reset the clock. No kidding. But I, you know, that's really the discussion that we want to have. Chris, I know has, you know, has presented his thoughts on it. Now open it up for that kind of discussion, but I don't think we vote on it tonight. I don't know that it's something that we need to get out of the way. I think you can, I would encourage everybody to look through it. And, uh, and then come back and we can, we can either motion for it the next time or not.
Yeah, I, I just had a chance to look, you know, I, I, I looked through the agenda earlier today and I, I, I don't know if this was added later, or maybe I just missed it today. So I, I'm just seeing their sample report that they sent us from decision insight. So I did not get a chance to really dive into it yet to, to see what the differences would be. So, yeah, I, I think we should all take a little bit of time to look at it and then see what kind of questions we'd have afterwards.
Fair enough. Okay. So then I would just advise the board to take a closer look and we can, uh, we can revisit this.
Did Brian disappear? Oh. Is he on yours?
No, I don't see him. Maybe he got his cable cut. I, I was just going to add to that, Keith.
I think he fell off the bleachers.
I hope they didn't collapse on them.
Those condemned bleachers.
Lucky we didn't move the baseball team there last year, huh?
I, I was just going to say regarding the decision. I want to say decision sprint, but that's not right. That's, that's a different technique. The question that I'd asked them, and your, your recollection was correct, Keith, in that when I looked at Nancy Anne's wonderful projections. And I'm going to say my, my looking was more, was more penalizing in that I, I, I found two projections, five years apart, not every year. So I compared something five years apart. Like I wonder how good her predictions were five years later or something like that. And they, they were between 2.9 and 4.8 or something like that. So they were pretty darn good. Which is the same ballpark that they talked about. And the one thing I wanted from them was, do they have similar data? Because frankly, Nancy Anne's numbers in reality would be better because she changed, you know, she updates them all the time. I took to like gee, I wonder how good you were guessing what five years that was. Well, not bad. You're actually pretty good, right? And, and not that we do that because we do it every year as far as I, I'm guessing. But the, I asked them, and I didn't look at the data either yet, Chris. I don't know if they provided, but I asked them for something similar. Can you show me a district that you projected out for X number of years? Show me your projection and what, and what was it five years later in what was reality? Just so I can get a feel for comparing it. The benefit of that other, of their model is it is more comprehensive. It doesn't make it better. Who knows, right? I mean, more data doesn't, you know, if, if I can get away with less data and do but as accurate of a job, count me in. But it, it's an interesting approach and that, that's what they do for a living. So part of me says I, you know, I, I would entertain it just because you know, if it's a, you know, it's not free for Nancy Anne to do it either. Anyway, but that's, those are my thoughts on the subject.
That's a good point too. All right. So.
Yeah, I think from my perspective, John, I think that, that, you know, the question really is, is how, what are we going to do with this information? And how is that going to guide the direction of the board in the future? And right, so if we have Nancy Anne's information, this one confirms it, then we can feel with some relative confidence going into our decisions. You know, about QE, about, you know, uh, those, those type of decisions, you know, down the road and even, you know, playing it out. It'll just position us a little bit better. That was just my thoughts. I, I don't think it's an astronomical amount of money.
Yeah, with the discount, it doesn't, I mean, doesn't seem too bad. So.
Yeah, I would agree.
Okay. All right, um, I'm going to move on now to our fiscal agenda. We have the Boucher and James Bill list, March 21. I'll need a motion.
So moved.
Second, Ms. Weed.
Discussion. All those in favor, say aye. Oppose or abstention?
One abstention. Mr. Jackson.
Motion passes with one abstention. Fiscal consent agenda, we have the treasurer's report, March 21, budget transfers, March 21. Bills list the same, March 21, approval of the agreement with Reading Baseball LP, approval three year contract for, within structure for Canvas and approval of the CSTAG threat assessment training from Navigate 360. I'll need a motion.
So moved, Mr. Akmanowicz.
I'll second Mr. Reimers.
Discussion.
I'm not sure I can support letter D unless I get tickets to that game, frankly.
I was going to say that's what Brian, um, Brian, Brian must be excited about that one. That'd be a nice one to sit in on.
I'll drive, Ron.
I'll go with you guys.
We'll see what we can swing, right? Zach, get on that.
Road trip.
If they let me throw a BP, I'll even take extra people.
Sounds like a plan.
Throw out the first pitch.
All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Is there anyone opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Our next item is on the facilities agenda is approval of the lawn and landscaping contract. So I'll need a motion for that.
Motion by Mr. Jackson.
Uh, Mr. Akman, second.
Don't you have to fill in the blank?
You have to pick an option.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's, there's.
I will read this better. So the motion is to award the lawn care landscaping country con- contract to, there's two different companies that are, have bid on this. And, um, there is a timeline there. So the current lawn and landscaping contract will expire June 30th of 21. And you have an option A or B. Option A is Ron Lawn. Option B is Ken Company. And I, I know there's probably going to be some discussion, comments about this, questions. So.
Can, can we get the discussion before the motion? I mean, the, the previous motion is, is void on its face because it didn't address the choice. The, uh, I believe the discussion will guide the, the, the choice of the motion if we've got to pick one. So I guess, do we want, can we have the discussion first?
Well, I was gonna, well, that's fine with me.
Yeah, because the, the, the pros and cons are in there and you can see the difference between two bidders. I, I was wondering why there wasn't a bidder with more than one syllable name, but that's just me. Ron and Ken.
So are we starting discussion now?
Yes.
Okay. So the reason I sent both of these here was, um, at the time I was the only member of the facilities committee present. And the, the other reason is, um, you know, part of the A and B, that there's quite a bit more than just who cuts the lawn here. You know what I mean? That, that, you know, choosing one of these options, you know, Ron Landscaping has been with us for over 20 years. And, um, you know, it, there's quite a bit of, um, of history there and I'm not sure how my, how many, um, uh, I guess, I, I'm not sure if we wanted to have this discussion much like we did with the bus contract. You know, where we all address the pros and cons or else I only sent you one option to vote on. So that's why I brought it both to you. But in, in my opinion now, if I am going to give a recommendation, you know, that looking at the pros and cons, uh, option B is, is a newer company. And, you know, I, I'm not sure it would be our best interest to help in their, or to aid with their growing pains, you know? Much like what we're dealing with, with SSC now, um, they would probably have to hire more people and buy more equipment because in the pros and cons, they are, they mentioned how they don't have many large contracts. So i- if this were the case, I'm not sure if it's in the district's best interest to be a part of their growing pains. Through that time, uh, it's not the easiest to hire people. It's certainly not the easiest to buy equipment right now either. So, you know, I, I, I would, um, I, I believe that I, I would want to stay with Ron. I know the cost is a little bit higher, but, um, you know, with discounts on the, on the planting and extra services that we would get. I, I think we would be in good shape sticking with option A.
Personally, I'm always, uh, happy, you know, somebody has to start somewhere and just because they might not have been around more than a few years. You know, I was a startup company a couple of times and you know, it's not, it's not necessarily a dig. So I, I guess I'm not as, as biased about ju- just because somebody's been around a long time, you know, or somebody's new, that that's necessarily disqualifier. They say they can do the job, they can do the job. I'm not, it's, I'm, I'm not putting any assumptions on whether they can get people or equipment that you know, if they sign a contract, they're going to deliver. And it's just, it, I don't want to say it's just grass, but it's not like it's a you know, if, if they turn out not to be good, then you make another contract. How long are these contracts for? This is the first time I've been on the board that I've heard of this.
Five years.
Five year contract.
This, this is five years. The, uh, yeah, the recommendation or how we would handle it is three with two one-year add-ons.
Ah, what, what does Mr. Christine think? What does Rob think about? Cause I, I, I know nothing about mowing lawns other than my push mower, but what's Rob say about these? You know, does he know these two folks?
Joe, would you elevate him up to the main panelists, please?
I'd also like to know if anybody can tell us off the cuff during this break period while he speaks, uh, what are we paying right now for these services?
Um, so, so it's a little different than our current because what we did this year is we, uh, we took the requirement to purchase the mulch out. Um, I talked to Rob there, the Bucks County IU is running a consortium this year for purchasing mulch. So I think we can probably save some money there. So it's hard to get an apples to apples because that was all built into the prior contracts.
We can buy it from a lacrosse team.
What's that?
We can buy it from the lacrosse team. I'm just saying.
Don't tell me, is that a fundraiser?
It is.
Wow.
I, I just bought, I just bought 15 yards today for their.
Victory Gardens has some really awesome weight trucks.
I did not mean to get us distracted, Zach. I'm so sorry.
All right, on topic. Rob, let us know what's on your mind.
Yes, yes. I mean, I, I agree. I mean, both, both contractors are qualified to, to hold this contract. I don't know if anybody knows the history here, but the current contract holder actually employed the other contract applicant for, for over 20 years. So he basically was a foreman and my direct contact for the history that they were employed here. So basically for 20 years, I dealt one-on-one with that employee. So, I mean, he's, he's actually doing a job for us right now at, at District Service Center and he, he has been handling all of the all of the, the jobs now that came in outside of the contract. So, and, and my opinion, he is definitely qualified. I know for, for a fact, he has enough staff and equipment to start. He could start tomorrow if we needed him. And same thing with Jason. I mean, the other contractor, current contractor could also start tomorrow. So, I mean, they're both qualified and that's, that's pretty much the history of, of both, uh, attendees.
And Zach, can, yeah, it looks like, go ahead, Chris, go ahead.
I, I gotta say, um, you know, this, this is, this is one of those areas where I'm a little bit disappointed as a school district for how we address this. So I'll take you back to the finance, the facilities committee meeting. When we were told we were going to lower the costs, we liked our contractor. We weren't looking to change. That's what we were told. So fast forward, they're, they're essentially a guy who worked for a guy and we bid these two guys against each other as a district without getting outside other bids. And I think it's a really slippery slope when you do this with connections, with, with deals that are made. I think we need to, we need to look at the way we did this. And I was disappointed. I talked to Zach about it. I talked to the, I, I, I missed this opportunity the, at the facilities committee meeting to have this discussion. But it's something that I don't know that that's in good practice. You know, there's, there's a lot of times where there's no complete clauses of, of organizations and other things. I don't know that that occurs in the landscaping business, but you know, from a community perspective, you know, I've gotten some feedback on this and I, and I think it's something that we, we need to be cautious about moving forward.
I just want to say, I second Keith. I, I'm concerned. There's only two bids here that the one guy works for the other guy. This feels super dirty. Yeah.
The only comment that I will make, the additional context that I learned today, I thought that the guy left the company recently, but it's been about two years. Right? Even though I can understand the concern, I'm not trying to downplay that. But it's not like the guy just left the company and started his own thing. He's had his own company for two years. And then most non-competes would expire after that amount of time.
Zach, did we?
I disagree with that at all. I just think, you know, in full disclosure, it would have been great to know at facilities meeting, what we were getting ourselves into. I think, you know, uh, my, my understanding from it was we were looking to lower our rates. We were, we were quoted at the time. We think we can get $20,000 less. That's why we approved it at the, at the, at the facilities committee. It didn't pan out that way. You know, later on, stuff comes out and, and, you know, you know, the board finds out about it. We ask questions and, and I just think it, it really, it didn't feel good to me. And I just want to be clear that, and I don't, I don't necessarily like this way of kind of haggling, if you will.
Zach, I got, I got two questions for you, Zach. First question, did, was this a open proposal? An, an open RFP floated out to the community or did we just approach these two individuals?
Yep. So going back to January, uh, which was the first time we brought it up, we discussed all the different ways you could approach something like this. An RFP, a bid, direct negotiation, any combination thereof. Uh, my understanding from that meeting that we had was that, you know, we had the discretion from the committee to do any of those as long as we're bringing back a best price. And we did, one of the options was that we brought up to renegotiate with the current firm. But again, we left that meeting with the understanding that we had the discretion to make sure we brought back options, best price, best service, that kind of a thing. So what we decided to do, uh, we did consult with, uh, Jeff Garten is ask for proposals from just two companies. Uh, because it is a service, you don't need to bid it out. And the reason we identified those two services or not two services, two vendors is one, obviously is doing the service right now. And two, uh, the other individual does other landscaping work for us outside of the contract. So when it comes to a service, uh, price is obviously important. It's not the most important. You want to make sure you are getting a vendor you trust and that you believe can do the service, do it well. So that's how we arrived at those two firms. Yep, go ahead.
Oh, so my second question, that, I, I, I don't need to know the history. You went with two firms you trusted that who had, had history with us. Hearing the concerns from some of the board members are, do we not have time to redo this?
Certainly. I mean, no, the, you know, we, we don't have to, uh, switch companies until July. I wouldn't wait too long because if you do make a change, obviously in July, you're in the, you know, the thick of it with, with grass cutting and landscaping. So you don't want to back it all the way up if you're going to make a change.
Yeah, I, I just, it's, it's, does anybody feel so strongly they would rather solicit like five companies or something like, I don't, I don't want to delay this. If we can get through it, somebody make a motion if we want to. If people feel stronger, let's go forward. But if others feel we need to look at this again, can we?
I think, I think we, I think we can vote on it tonight. I think, you know, I think our, our, you know, my point was that, that, you know, I want to, I want to make sure that as a board, you know, this is, this is again, I, I go back to when we're presented with stuff, a, a committee work, it's clear on what we're getting ourselves into. Uh, and, and you know, because we're the, we, we, we deal with it at the community level. And, uh, and, and that's all I'm saying.
And in other words, I wanted to bring up real quick to the lawn season.
I'm using my, I raised my hand, so.
Let him go.
I'm, I'm surprised. I'm, I'm surprised that people didn't pick up on that yet.
I did.
You need to use the hand icon.
Yeah, follow along. The thing in the, on the toolbar that says raise hand, use it.
Oh, it's not there.
Go ahead, Mr. Kern.
So I, 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 I understand your, your, your point, Keith. It's, it's, these are some subtleties that, that is important for us to have known right away. I think that's what you're saying is, and it might've been an oversight. It might've just been, you know, everybody knows this and it's just common, except we don't. And yeah, it's easy to get blindsided and not quite understand that, you know, something like this could look delicate. I certainly wouldn't go as, as, go much further than that. I, you know, I don't think there's anything nefarious or, you know, or whatever, but, um, what about splitting the contract? Give both halves of the pie. Who knows? There's always that, or just pick the lowest bidder.
When, when it comes time to make a motion, I, I'm ready to make a motion, but I'll, if anybody else wants to keep talking.
You guys want to vote on this tonight or what?
Hold on. I just wanted to bring up one more quick point. We should vote on this tonight just because, uh, I, I know in hiring a landscaper at my work, I was told that we did it last week and that we were late. You know, grass cutting has already started. So, you know, you're gonna, we're gonna want to switch somebody in the middle of that season that may be a, a little more difficult for the vendors to take on, you know, that it, it, I mean, the, they would switch in the middle of the season regardless, but you probably want to know where you're going to be for the season. You know, now or soon from now.
Good point.
Ms. Mitchell, may I renew my motion, please?
Okay.
Uh, I am going to make the motion that we select Ken cons specifically because they are the lowest bidder. So that is my recommendation. Do I have a second?
I second, Mr. Kern.
Discussion. Can I, can I just abstain? Cause I don't know.
Cause you don't know. I, I don't think you could abstain.
I don't feel comfortable.
You have to have a legal basis to abstain.
You have to have a legal basis.
She can abstain for any reason.
I plead the fifth. No, I'm kidding. I don't know, guys.
I'm with you, Kalen, but I think we need to vote.
The document's pretty good if you read it and the, there's.
No, I did, I did. It's just there is part of me that feels uncomfortable about this.
There's a lot of motions on the table, so let's.
There's a lot of me that does. Look, guys, you know, um, I, 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 I don't care who cuts our grass at the end of the day, but I care about transparency. And this doesn't, it doesn't feel right to me. It just doesn't. These were, these were open bids who, you know, Rob just admitted he had a 20-year relationship with the guy who's going to get awarded the contract. I think it's, uh, it doesn't, it doesn't bode well with me. And, uh, no, I'll be voting no.
I mean, and, 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 and Rob, you know.
Simply based off of that, that, that reason.
We, and we trust you. I, I trust you, Rob.
But I do about trust. It has nothing to do with trust. It has everything to do with transparency of, of the way we process this.
And I, and you absolutely, you, you have a credible point and I'm not trying to diminish that. What I was just going to say is as far as the relationship, I think part of that could be that Rob feels confidence and, um, working with that person that they will do a good job. That's all I was going to say.
Very well may. May do a fantastic job. I have no idea. I don't know any of these players. I've never seen grass cutted. Whether it's good or bad grass, I have no idea.
But maybe we could take, we, we could take something from this.
And I want to go back to what we were told at the facilities committee. Like that's the premise. We're happy with our contractor. He's been doing it for 20 years. We're trying to get a lower cost. That's what we were told. That wasn't what the plan was. We're executing their plan.
Well, you don't, that's, that might be an assumption, but you don't know that there's a plan.
Okay, John, you're right. I don't have, I don't have clear evidence, but I'm telling you, when you look at, when you start peeling back the onion.
It just feels uneasy and I, and I think that's, you have a right to express that.
Yeah. Motion on the table. Shall we?
Okay, let's do a, um, roll call, Terry, please. So a yes vote, just to be clear, um, a yes vote would be in favor of option A. A no vote would be not in favor of option A.
Wait, what did Ron suggest? It's the other way around.
I'm so sorry.
I thought it was option B.
Thank you for correcting me. I apologize. Option B.
Can I ask one question?
Did you say my name? I'm sorry.
Yeah. Didn't you tell me that these were year-over-year contracts that we renewed?
Uh, depends what they are. So.
Wasn't it prior, but prior to this, didn't we, it wasn't a year-over-year?
No, we, uh, so we are at the end of a five-year contract with Ron Lawn. So sometimes we do, you know, for, for, um, I'll give you an example. Next month, you're going to get a list of like 15 contracts from Rob that are all of our various, um, renewal contracts for a one-year extension, like PMs for HVAC, whatever they all are. Uh, something a little larger like this, that's more annual routine. It's the same thing, weekly, monthly, whatever it might be. Um, we try to do more than, than one year. So this is the last of, of the five-year agreement. And again, the recommendation would be whoever you select, um, it'd be a three and we would agree or not to agree to extend for the last two on a one-year basis. That's similar to what we did with SSC.
And you have out clauses in all these?
So, uh, what we would require, Jeff Garten's still working on, on the contract, regardless of who it is, um, we put in the motion subject to final, I forget the language on, in front of me, uh, contingent, um, final contract language subject to solicitor review. So we would, we would be working on that, but we would require what's called a, uh, performance bond. So whichever company, if they weren't able to meet the needs of the contract, uh, we typically do it for something smaller like this, one-fifth of the contract. We would, um, go to the, the bond company and say they're not meeting the obligations or say they don't have the equipment or whatever it might be. Yeah.
What's our current bond for, for?
For the current contract with Ron Lawn, I don't know off the top of my head. I assume it's probably one-fifth of the contract. I didn't do that one. That was prior to me starting in the position. But anyway, what you do is you collect the money from the bond and you use that to, to quickly turn around and get another company in.
So just to be, to clarify, option B, a, a vote for yes is opt- for option B, and that is Ken Company. Is it, am I accurate?
So before we vote, what if both fail at the end of this? You know, I'm just curious.
And you don't have a landscaping contract beginning July 1st. You should do something different.
We'd have to start over or something.
Chris can get up and move.
Yeah, because we don't have everybody here. So, um, what we would need, we need five. All right, um, Terry, do you want to go ahead?
Sure. Mr. Kern.
Yes.
Mr. Akmanowicz.
You're muted, Dave. Oh, sorry.
He's thinking.
Yes.
Ms. Weed.
Yes.
Mrs. Mitchell.
No.
Mr. McCucci.
No.
Mr. Reimers.
Yes.
Mr. Spear.
No.
Mr. Jackson.
Yes.
Motion passes five to three.
Motion passes five to three. Congratulations. Um, who knew? We'd have such an, uh, spirited debate about, about that contract. All right, I'm going to move on to the facilities consent agenda. On that agenda, we have the Bucks County IU Head Start Program at the Sixth Grade Center. SSC custodial contract updates, and this is what we were discussing earlier as far as, um, that particular contract increase. They're asking for an increase here. It's pretty minimal. And also the baseball field options, exploring those, I'll need a motion.
Uh, Ms. Mitchell, can I just, uh, correct one thing you just said? I'm sorry. The, the SSC one isn't for any specific agreement. It was just to make sure we have board support to move forward with negotiating something. So we didn't want to go through that process if there wasn't support for it. So we would come back for an actual, later with an actual amendment, um, if it passes.
So this is just to explore possibly increasing that?
Yeah, that we have the authority to engage in that, that negotiation process.
Okay. Thanks for that clarification. So I'll need a motion for those.
So moved.
I'll second.
Discussion. All those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Next is the Human Resources Consent Agenda. We have professional staff, supervisory, uh, staff, support staff, substitute aides and unit pay. I'll need a motion.
Motion by Mr. Jackson.
Second, Mr. Reimers.
Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is the Office for Teaching and Learning Consent Agenda. On that, we have the Approval of the Act 48 Plan, Approval of Induction Plan, Approval of Textbooks and Plan Course Statements. I'll need a motion.
So moved, Mr. Reimers.
I'll second. Ms. Weed.
Discussion.
Hmm, I'm just bummed I didn't take the time to go through some of the links on those books. The old days of actually getting a book and looking at it was so much easier.
Yeah, I, I can see that.
I fell down a bit on the job there.
I tried and I couldn't understand the piano stuff, so I just assumed.
I am now a master ukulele.
All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, the motion carries unanimously. Next is the Policy and Programs Consent Agenda. We have the Approval of the Committee Recommendations, uh, Approval of the Health, well, actually we already did that one, so I'm going to remove that. Approval of the Policy Maintenance Service Agreement with PSBA. Approval of Pool Council Contract Between Sweet Stevens, Katz and Williams. The Placement Waiver Agreement for Student. There's, there's, uh, three different ones. So 200201859618444. I'll need a motion.
So moved.
Second, Mr. Jackson.
Discussion.
I, I did have a question about, um, Part D. Um, do we use those, um, that, uh, retainered or, uh, attorney very often with, um, Sweet Stevens, Katz and Williams? Is that a, a service we utilize a lot? Dr. Hunter?
Yeah, these, the, uh, typically the special needs attorney for, I'm assuming for those three students who had placement waivers, but I'm hoping somebody from, I know Janet's can pipe in on that. I don't know if, if anybody else is around.
Oh, I thought that this was just a contract to keep this, um, this attorney on retainer. You know, I guess per year or is that how, what this is?
That's typically, that's typically what they do for us.
This, this is not a retainer, um, and he was not involved with those placement waivers. Um, but except to make a, a template for us for students who are on virtual, um, placements and don't want to come back when they're not, we're not recommending that they remain in virtual, uh, programming. But this agreement, um, the pool council is much like the computer, the technology pool council that's used. They, um, provide us, uh, for a fee, um, um, that's included in this waiver or in the contract. Legal counsel throughout the year, um, and they also provide, um, professional development to our staff for four full days.
So, so this is something that, that we utilize quite.
Every year. Yeah, it's ongoing. And we can add, I can call and ask questions if it's, if attorneys are not involved. So if we have a what-if situation or there's something that I'm not sure of and I don't want to head down a legal path or make sure that we're protecting the district, I can call and that's also included in the service and that's unlimited.
Okay. All right. I just wanted clarification because like even what Ron said, it's kind of lumped in with the same votes as those three replaced students. So you're like, is this something we just did for just that or is it, you know?
No.
All right. Thank you for answering that question. Uh, I think we're ready to vote, right?
Yep.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Some information items, reminder to all board directors. Um, if you served in 2020, you must fill out the Statement of Financial Interest Form and you must send that over to Terry by April 23rd. There is also an online form, but you still have to print that out and submit that. There are some additional items there for your viewing, uh, the High School Suspension Report, Enrollment Status Counts, SRO Report, and the Obligation Bond Series A of the 2021 Sale Results. And there's also a budget summary of unknown variables that are included and tho- that's a really interesting one. Um, it breaks down some of the things like QE renovations, universal full-day kindergarten, the baseball field, school start times and class size restrictions, somewhat of a wish list and just gives you an idea of the, the financial obligation for that. We're going to move on to new business. Any new business?
Before everybody pipes in and wishes Jenny a, a farewell, um, Mr. Garten, I want to clarify that we have, since we have to fill her seat, uh, this position would be the, the person who fills her seat would simply serve out the end of this year. Is that accurate?
Um, that's correct. And you ha- I don't know what the date of Jenny's resignation is, but you have 30 days from the effective date of her resignation. So it would be, it would be, uh, would be who the board, if she would make the, the resignation effective when she actually moves out, so you have more time to, to conduct your interviews and do your appointment.
I, I can do that. Do you want me to make it effective? I was going to send my letter to Terry tomorrow.
I would, you can send the letter, make it effective, like, when do you think you're going to be going to closing and actually moving out?
Oh, I, I know when we're moving. We're moving in about three weeks, so I can do that date.
Make it effective the day you know you're gone.
Okay.
And not only that, but her term was up in November anyway.
Correct.
And would serve until December. And if they happen to be a candidate in the November election for her seat, theoretically they would stay on if they won. Otherwise they would only be in the seat until, uh, your December reorganization meeting.
So, so would we have to then start advertising now or start on her effective retirement date?
You can start advertising now.
Okay.
But you'd have more time.
Jenny, are you still, are you going to make the April 29th board meeting? Are you going to be literally gone by then?
Well, I'm, I, I can't make the 29th because that happens to be my birthday. I'm going to be, uh, we'll still be in the house. So.
Okay, so technically we can make, we can make, what's, what, what, what meetings do we have in May?
Well, if she can't attend though, the April 29th meeting.
That'd be the date of her resignation though.
May 13th is the May meeting.
That's the only May meeting?
Yes.
The sooner, the sooner we have the resignation though, the sooner we can get a replacement, whoever that is.
Well, but you.
Cause we have some very important decisions.
Well, Dr. Hunter, I wasn't suggesting that you delay the appointment, but you, you need time to go through the interview process to solicit people that are interested. So if, if a resignation was effective tonight, I doubt you could finish that in time.
But if, if it was, if it was dated on the 13th of April, then we have to fill it on the 13th of May, which is our May meeting.
At the last, at the last date, you could fill it. Otherwise the court fills it. So you want to, you want her to give you enough time. You can solicit folks tomorrow. Put the ad in the paper, whatever you do, and do your interviews in May meeting and you could even appoint in May if you want, but I wanted to make sure you've got enough time to do it.
Jenny, tell you what, we'll take it offline and.
Well, I can tell you, I can tell you when I'm leaving, um, Milford Township and Quakertown is May 14th. So I don't.
Well, I can tell you, I can tell you when I'm leaving, um, Milford Township and Quakertown is May fourteenth, so why don't I just date it for that? And we're all.
Or May thirteenth, which would probably be the safe one. Yeah.
I mean, that's when I officially am leaving and we're, we're gone on.
Then when would our meeting be in June? Would, would we have?
But you can, you can, you can interview at the May thirteenth meeting for candidates. If you're, if so, you can go, you can, can't, you could even vote that night if you, if you're able to do that. Because Jenny, oh, his resignation will be effective that day.
Oh, okay. I thought we couldn't do anything until the resignation date. We could, we could get the candidates.
Yeah, you can get it all, you can do all the interviews and everything else while you're, while the effective data that comes up.
So if our meeting is May thirteenth, then you should resign May twelfth.
That makes.
Maybe that's the best, yeah.
Yes.
Okay, well, that, that works and I'm, I'm out of Milford Township the fourteenth, so that is honest and above board and everything, so yeah.
We, and, and we can seek your replacement beginning today. But don't leave her, Jenny.
There's some good candidates. So one guy had, who's running, I think, is gonna run and then there's some people. We'll, we'll get in Milford.
Yeah, so, so can I bring something up for new business? Cause I, I'm still disturbed by the way this went down. Can we have Policy Committee look at the way we do things? Uh, as far as, as far as business operations, uh, when it comes to this kind of thing?
Well, service contracts, I, I believe that's, it's good to, to point that out because they're not under the same. Uh, bidding rules, right, Zach? Isn't it?
Right. And I, and I gotta tell you, this, this doesn't, I'm, I'm really disturbed by it. Uh, the whole process, I'm disappointed in us. And uh, and I want to see some resolution for transparency to the community. Moving forward.
You take a look at it, Keith.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I understand your point. I, I guess I don't take it. Excuse me, Zunhite, whoever did that.
All right.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't think anybody's trying to not be transparent, I think, I guess. So it's good to, it's good to look into it and, and.
John, if I, if I, if I could, if I could give you the analogy, right? So, so again, I go back to. You got a guy, he's got a twenty year relationship with one guy, guy who's been working for us for twenty years, and all of a sudden, something goes away. Anybody else I've talked to about it, talked to my father, independent of this entire situation, guys I work with. Everybody says, doesn't pass the sniff test. It just looks bad. As a community, as a community board with taxpayers in mind, we need to have oversight, complete transparency of it. And that's what I'm gonna ask the Policy Committee to do, put together, so that we can rest assured. That we are transparent to the community we serve. That's all I'm asking for.
You know, we can look at that.
I think it's fair.
Thank you.
Kalen, can I bring up?
I, I'd just like to say something that there is, um, on behalf of the team here. That um, we do this often, Keith. We have our, our um, attorney that works for a law firm that we've had a long relationship with. But the attorney was the person who provided the service. He moved laws, law firms, so, uh, so we went with him to the new law firm. So this is a practice that the districts, the school districts do on a regular basis. And again, it was an above board practice and I don't want to leave this community. With thinking that we are doing some, something that's not transparent, that's not above board. It's not at the best interest of the taxpayers, because it costs, it costs the taxpayers less. So that's, that's my.
It's not, it's not my point. I think you're missing my point. And my point is, my point is. That you have, you have two companies competing against it. You got one with an inside guy, one the guy who's making the decision and one without that. It doesn't, it doesn't look good for us. And while I say it could, everything could be perfect, I have made no accusations. I'm saying at the blush of somebody who, who made the decision to even allow the board, the, 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 this to be opened up. What the end result was, wasn't what I was given in January. And as a board member, it's a disappointment. I felt like I was misled. And so you could say whatever you want. I've explained this to Zach. I just feel like we weren't given information upfront. And it doesn't, it doesn't make me feel good as a, as a community member, this decision. Now, all I asked for was, can we look at it in policy to make sure that what we do just remains that way? And maybe it's the way we're doing it. And that's the, that's what we gotta look at. That's all I'm saying.
Okay, point, point made.
Kalen, I had a question, I guess. I, I don't know. Um, but a couple of times tonight, we've talked about universal full day K and, and the committee meetings or the committee reports and. And some other times, but um, you know, at, at this point, we're coming off the pandemic. We don't know. What we don't know as far as learning loss. I think it, it's a smart move to discuss it a little bit more. And, and whether or not we want to kind of move forward with it. So I don't know the, the best way to do that. I know we talked about it in committee last week, but what's the next step?
Um, if I may.
Please.
Um, Mr. McCucci had a really great idea about having the board talk about the budget. And what are the major cost drivers and what are the options between no tax increase, some tax increase or full index? And um, and, and one of those items is your, 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 your discussion point with. Full day K, so that's part of that, that twenty first.
So you're holding off until that discussion?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Because that's gonna be a cost driver if we do it right away.
Okay, yeah, I just wasn't sure what the next steps would be.
Yeah, Brian, in, in there, I, I even think that they, they have the, the laid out. Or they have it laid out is all at once or phased in, so we can see what the financial impact of all that is, so. But I, I think on the twenty first is when we had planned on really discussing that.
And to, to, uh, I think a point was made by John, some parents probably will want still half day. So we may not need to go full force with that right away.
Right.
But that's a discussion we can have.
Thank you.
Yep. Any um, any final words for Jenny? I shared already.
Nothing for Jenny.
Oh, Jenny, you're gonna miss policy, admit it.
Jenny, thank you.
I, I'm gonna miss it terribly and I think, you know, you should take over.
Not it.
You should come back every week, every month, just to, just to hang out.
Well, am I allowed to come on the twenty first?
They're open to the public, so you can come.
Well, I know.
You can come on the twenty first of twenty twenty two.
Vote on anything in.
Oh, this is April twenty first. I, I don't think that's a voting meeting.
Oh, it's not. Okay, so it doesn't matter. You, I'm sorry, I'm missing the twenty ninth. It's my daughter's birthday and mine, and it's her twenty first, so we're taking it.
Oh, wow, that's exciting. Yeah.
Until you officially resign, you're always a board member, right?
Yes, yes. It's been a really good experience. It's been tough this past year, but it's been a very good experience. And I would encourage anyone out there in the community to do it.
Well, again, Jenny, we wish you the best.
Yeah, good luck.
Um, on a separate note, uh, the tech school, just a reminder to everybody, opened up for business for most things, some changing. Uh, changes happened. The bakery should be open soon. The restaurant should be open soon. If it's open already, right, Chris?
It is.
It's open already. I just went last week and it was good.
So I encourage people from the community to get out there, check them out on the website and find out their hours, limited hours, of course, because it happens during the tech school. So there's like a two hour window or something like that.
One hour. Restaurant is twelve to one, so it's tough.
I am going to get a pedicure. I can't wait. Those prices are affordable, let me just tell you.
Yeah.
And it gives, it gets practice. Um, okay, some calendar dates. Our next board meeting is going to be on the twenty ninth. And there's some other meetings there listed if anybody is interested. Did we have any final public comment?
Uh, the twenty first is not listed on that meeting, but there is a special finance committee meeting on April twenty first. I believe it's at seven o'clock, right, Terry? Or Keith, whoever was setting that up.
I sent a calendar in, let me look.
Okay, it's just not on this.
I have five thirty.
Here.
Yes, I have five thirty.
Oh, five thirty, okay, so it's early.
Did we tell Chris seven o'clock personally?
Probably.
Yeah, that's a good move. Darn, now he figured it out.
Thanks, Chris, for clarifying. Um, did we get any other public comments?
No, there's no comments.
All right, so in that case, then I will move to uh, ask for a motion to adjourn the.
And I'll second Mr. Akmanowits.
Thank you all. Have a great night. Be safe, Jenny.
Bye bye. Thanks, everyone.